What time is it, 4:05? Let's get this council works session started. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Yes, Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welker.
Here.
Most approved, agenda is proposed.
What should be made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
I propose we have an agenda. First up, we have Mr. Tavis Hall, which will, or Noel Anderson, or Tavis, one of you, with regards to our Main Street annual report.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Tavis is here to give his annual report to us as a part of the Main Street contract with the city of Waterloo. It states in there that Main Street will come and update the council as to their activities and functions that they're working on, and so we set up this work session so that Mr. Hall can do that very effect. Noel, if I can give you these. Over you go.
All right. Thank you. All right. So I'll start off, just sort of briefly speaking about the Main Street program as a whole, and then delve into what it is specifically that Main Street Waterloo does, and then finish before questions with what we're looking at for 2016 and moving forward. So, Main Street is a, an economic development organization at its heart. Recognized as a historic preservation, partnered with volunteer engagement, is a very strong tool for downtowns like Waterloo. They can build a deeper connection to the community from our citizens, a strong market for small businesses, and an economic base that will make the city stronger. Specifically about Main Street Waterloo, our downtown is in good shape. 2015, you'll see in the, that last page, the SRE report, there's a $70 million in commerce in 2015. That's using census debt as well. We've got 2,100 individuals living downtown within about a quarter mile radius of the center of the district, and information from Xavier Atlas, which uses census information, and some other key factors provided by the University of Northern Iowa, shows a total downtown daytime working population of 5,500. So, it's great for us to be able to tell that story about the economic power that is downtown. A business approached the city and said, "We're looking at $70 million worth of commerce and 5,500 jobs." I think everybody'd be pretty happy. Main Street Waterloo uses the national Main Street approach, which is for sort of silos, design, economic vitality, organization, and promotions and marketing. We do what we can to keep all of those in balance. It isn't a volunteer organization, so you're gonna have waves and peaks and valleys, but for the most part, we do a pretty good job. Design Council works closely with incoming and existing downtown businesses, as well as City Hall, to ensure that an aesthetic standard is equally applied to all applicants, piece by piece, making downtown work. In 2015, Main Street Waterloo Design Council approved 18 new projects. That goes from signage, which is a requirement through ordinance to get approved by Main Street Design Review, outdoor seating, and even tackled some complete facade replacements. Economic Vitality works to attract new businesses to the district. Most recently, the $6 million Wonder Bread project started with the effort by the Economic Vitality Council to save the building of Wonder Bread, which resulted in Dave Morgan and Single Speed's investments, which we're certainly looking forward to in 2017. Organization Council works to engage the public through volunteerism. In 2015, Main Street Waterloo tabulated 1,950 volunteer hours. Using the value of a volunteer hour, according to the federal government's Corporation for National and Community Service, which does a state-by-state analysis and valuation for volunteer hours, Main Street volunteers' value totals $42,412 in volunteer activity. Promotions Council holds the events that showcase our district. In 2015, Main Street held 16 events, bringing 29,000 individuals to the city center, where patrons spend additional dollars, dining, drinks, entertainment, shopping, and those events are listed within that packet. So, a little bit about where we're going in 2016 and beyond. 2016 is actually Main Street Waterloo's, or Waterloo's anniversary as a Main Street city, so I gotta plug that. October 20th is going to be our, our business luncheon, our anniversary luncheon, so we'll make sure that all members of council and city staff get a formal invite. We've added community conversations as a function of Main Street. I think Councilman Schmidt was, was at one of ours regarding parking. It's a difficult, difficult task for the parking enforcement folks, but being, being able to be there, engage with citizens, patrons, downtown business owners, is an important piece of, of the service that we provide, because community is about, at its heart, conversation and talking with each other. We continue to build relationships and partnerships with other downtown entities, including CVB, Waterloo Center for the Arts, Grouse Museum, Gable Museum, YWCA, Silos and Smoke Sacks, Leisure Services, and other public, as well as public-private institutions to showcase the downtown's offerings. This last year, we did a downtown Summer Olympics promotion that was aimed to get kids and families more engaged and sort of showcase what all is available here in the city center. We're looking to revamp My Waterloo Days for 2017. Those will be, those updates will, will, the details will come as we're, as they're solidified, but we're actually excited about some of the new stuff that we're looking at doing with the program. Technological advances for the district, looking at district-wide marketing services for downtown businesses, specifically retail, dining, nightlife. So, we're looking to roll that out yet this year. And then finally, just an improved marketing effort, bringing more people to the district, and working with you and I to develop a way to measure our events more accurately in terms of business impact, sales tax receipts, that sort of thing. So, that is, I told Noel, I tried to keep it brief so that we had time for questions and hopefully a couple of answers.
Well, I've been on council eight years, in this seat for about 10 months. This was one of the best reports that I've probably seen. I don't know, have we always received the same information, things to do in downtown Waterloo with marketplace profiles and volunteer hours?
This is Noel. You know, obviously, all the directors have given a little bit different approach. I would, I would agree, Mayor, this is one of the more comprehensive reports that we've seen in terms of the amount of activities they've done, plus other research that they've done to help try to attract things to downtown.
Yeah, so, great information this afternoon. Counsel question.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hall, do we keep track of new jobs that we create on a yearly basis? I know it's probably hard to, because you just got to the position, but, you know what I mean? We, as a council, at least I always want to see if we're growing, if we're creating new business jobs.
Oh, we've got the, the, I'll mess it up every time unless I look at it, Xavier Atlas, but that only gives us a five-year. We've got some capacity to do that, just with sort of old-school follow-up with each new business and, and taking a look, but each business is gonna have their own flux. So, for instance, if Ivan, one year with Screamin' Eagle, only needs 10 bartenders as opposed to 12 the year before, we try to collect that information, but it's, it moves around so much that it's probably hard to give a truly accurate, we can give a ballpark, though, and, and that's one of the things that we're working with you and I, to try to get something a little bit more consistent, because the Xavier really goes off of census information, so we only have that every, every census.
But I would think like the new Wonder Bread venture, he would certainly have-
Yeah, we'll have a ballpark-
-hard data on-
Of what we've added, yeah. Yeah, we'll be able to provide what we've added. We just might not be able to have the most accurate of what's fluxed.
Sure.
Yeah.
And did I hear the number 5,500 used a little bit earlier?
Yep, that's, that's through the Xavier Atlas, which you and I provided us.
And reference that number again, that was the amount of jobs that are down-
That's daytime, that's our, that's downtown's daytime population.
Okay.
Within a quarter mile and a little bit of a, of a jaunt.
All right. This, and Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hall, on this, this sheet here, this ESRI, to me, that's kind of interesting. Does that show, in other words, you know, motor vehicle parts dealers, where, where we should have $5 million more in retail activity from those guys? Or, is that what I'm looking at in this thing? It, it shows where we should concentrate our recruitment efforts?
Yeah, it would, it would show where there's room for potential, room for growth. I think part of that, if I'm not mistaken, is taken from sort of an overall look at the city, so if you look at where other car dealers are at, some of the potential there to relocate, to have some of those downtown and to grow that, that segment.
Mr. Hall?
Yes?
Yeah, in, in relation to just downtown, there's many, especially older communities that are taking measures to appeal to the millennials coming to town. Is Waterloo, downtown Waterloo, are, are they looking at that? Are they gearing to that? Is, are the plans aiming for that? And if they've been aiming for that, are we seeing any results from that?
Sure. What we've found as an organization over the last 20 years is that attracting families, young families in particular, is probably the most successful effort that we've found in bringing folks, you know, 20 to 35. And so, as we, as the city explores things like, as the city has done, things like the Splash Pad, Phelps Youth Pavilion, some of the efforts at the Grouse, you know, those things really help, but then we do our part as well with trick-or-treat, which gets folks into those businesses and just showcases, "Hey, I didn't know," for instance, "that the Finery had an upstairs," which is more sort of ready-to-wear versus just the bridal wear. Also, our, our Winter Waterloo event is, is being revamped to be a bit bigger. It'll be the same day as Small Business Saturday, and so, there's a lot of national marketing that goes on, and it makes sense to sort of target that towards parents, towards kids, and, and get those young families down here. And then also, with Friday Lou's, we're constantly trying to find, you know, younger entertainment with their own bit of following that helps bring some of those millennials that you were referencing back down to the park.
Also, just on a current note, how are the Main Street businesses handling the water?
Well, we've, everything seems good. There wasn't much in basements, there wasn't much, you know, a little bit of nerves, I think, from patrons, so this weekend wasn't necessarily the greatest, but the city honestly deserves a round of applause on both city government and citizens in coming together. It was packed down there on Saturday with folks, you know, getting ready to sandbag. It didn't matter what folks looked like, didn't matter what corner of the city they were from, they were from various walks of life, and it was pretty cool to see everybody down here trying to save the, the heart of the city.
Do you have a new business startup count, say, the last 12 months, new business in downtown?
Um, let me see if that's referenced in here. So, we've got, yes or no? We don't have a, we don't have a dedicated count to new businesses. We do have the development tracker, which pulls permits, so, for instance, I know that one was three. But we don't have, and, and we'll make sure to have it next year, a more accurate accounting for new businesses. It becomes a little tricky with some of, the storefronts are easy to identify. It's when we get into some of those larger structures, Blacks Building, First National, where it gets a little harder to have a full accounting, because a lot of those are counseling services or accounting firms, right? So, so we don't necessarily, we don't see those folks, and, and we try to work with those property owners to make sure that they're letting us know when somebody new moves in, but we'll make sure to include those numbers broken out specifically for next year.
Mr. Schmidt?
And just to tag on to both Mr. Lynn and Mr. Powers, Mr. Hall, it seems like, you know, and I understand you're new in the position, that if you could start now that you're in there, kind of gathering these numbers together, because I'm, I'm curious, and Noel, I don't know if you'd have a guesstimate on this, the number of vacant storefronts we have in downtown Waterloo, and whether it's gone up or down in the last three years? I wouldn't go back five, because I'm sure going back five, it would've, but it seems like we've had some peaks and valleys, and I'm not sure exactly where we're at right now. And, and then the other thing is, I've been on liaison to the Main Street Board for a number of years prior to that, I was on the board, so I won't identify which directors, but comments I did hear from some of the business owners in downtown Waterloo is, they never met the former executive director, whichever one it is I'm talking about.
Sure.
And, you know, I think that's always been part of the job description, is, is reaching out to the downtown business owners, and I understand they didn't do it probably intentionally, they just got too busy doing other stuff.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that is critical, that, you know, we all kind of get in the boat together and, and that kind of thing, so I'd encourage you to do that, and I'm sure you are.
Yeah, that's been one of the advantages of doing those community conversations, is that, you know, I'm going around and having those conversations with, with business owners to personally invite them to some of those, some of those meetings, so it's been good so far.
And do we have any kind of an actual count of the number of businesses and what we would define as our Main Street area, whether it's 200 or 400 or?
We're roughly 100 merchants, so that's, you know, dining, retail, nightlife. When it comes to some of the services, we don't have as accurate count for those, but we can certainly, again, work to develop a more accurate count.
Do we have some data on the number of parcels, number of owners with Smith?
Yeah.
Yeah, metrics are always good. Thank you.
Mr. Hall?
Yep.
There, in the past, there's been some talk about expanding the Main Street boundaries. Is that still on the table or, or not? And the second part to that is the funding, the monies that Main Street needs over time to do the work that you do to promote our downtown. Have there been any issues, even more so in the last year that have come up that need attention?
Are you asking me, we want more money? Oh, you know, I would, I would say, repeat the first question, sorry, I was too busy making-
The boundaries.
Boundaries. We've, we've looked at it, we've explored it. We are currently exploring SMID, just doing our homework on it, getting ready to have the conversations with some folks, just to see if it's an option, to see if it's something that we want to bring forward. Through that has been a conversation about perhaps expanding the boundaries, but that depends on a whole lot of factors. Certainly wouldn't be because of a lack of interest, because we recognize the downtown, we've, we view all of downtown as, as one. So, the fact that we've got a boundary that splits it makes it a little awkward, certainly with design aesthetics, with signage, with some of those sorts of things where our committees would prefer to have some input. But again, that's, that's all got to be weighted, and, and it will be here in the coming months. In terms of, in terms of funding, you know, we're able to do what we do with current funding. There are things that we would like to do more of, specifically district marketing, so to really showcase downtown as a destination, whether it be for dining, whether it be for retail, whether it be for nightlife. Frankly, because of, of budget, we're not currently able to do that, so there would be room for expansion, and we're certainly open to that conversation.
Mrs. Schmidt, can you just real briefly give us the pluses and the minuses of expanding the footprint of Main Street, based on the conversations you've had since you've been director?
Sure. One of the bigger benefits is taking a look at signage, taking a look at building facades, building constructions, so whether it be Hawkeye or, or any of these new builds, and just being able to have input so that we've got some design aesthetic that's current throughout the district. Certainly, as we look, as we move forward, if SMID is something that we, that we go toward, certainly all of downtown will benefit from the marketing opportunities that come, that are generated through those dollars and the economic development dollars. So, it would make sense that everyone's got equal skin in the game, so that would be one, that would be one more reason as to expand that footprint. Certainly, you know, one of the drawbacks is that it's more on the plate. So, you know, those design reviews take time, and so we're already at 18 last year. You know, that's, that's one and a half every month. We'd probably be over two if we were to get, hopefully we'd be over two, if we were to get throughout the district, throughout the entire downtown, which would probably be a heavier lift for some of our councils, but I think that they're, they're ready for it.
We got one more.
One more.
Crossing Franklin Street, we've heard some discussions, recent council meetings, about crossing Franklin and going further up into the Walnut Court area east of Florida.
Sure.
Is that part of your discussions?
Um, to some extent, however, you know, for instance, our design standards are for commercial. We really aren't an organization that, that is equipped for residential, other than sort of the upper, the, the multi-residential units that are on the upper. So, it's not that we wouldn't have an interest in assisting, and we would, we would be open to playing a role, but there's, there's probably a better approach towards developing not just commercial on that corridor, but also redeveloping residential than, than the Main Street approach.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Hall, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
We have three more minutes.
It's approximate, we consider.
It's approximate, so we can start with the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances Changes by Suzie Scher.
You okay with me sitting here and not make a call?
I'm okay with you sitting there in council. It's probably okay here in one of the-
Ballot conference?
Basically, our code of ordinances are required to be updated every 10 years by state law for the state code, so 2017 is that 10-year mark, and we need to get started on it if we're gonna get it done. It's a big undertaking. We have done some research into the cost and don't really have good estimates yet, but are working on that, but wanted to make sure that council knows what's coming. The goal is to take it chapter by chapter, or title by title, because we, for some reason, have titles instead of chapters, but, so the first step of rewriting the code and making sure that everything's included is to do Title I. That's probably one of the more important sections of the code, and it's also one of the last places that gets updated just out of necessity. So, what that section of the code is, is the section of the code that outlines how the city is structured and how it operates. Most of that code was written in 1941, so it definitely, things have changed since 1941, and how we do things has changed since 1941, so it's, it's really gonna need to be looked at as far as how council is structured, how the mayor's office is structured, and how all the departments are structured, and that's really what that code outlines. It also outlines how council meetings are ran, so it needs to take into account that now there are a lot of state codes that really dictate how things are done, where back in 1941, the city code dictated how those things were done. So, there will be a lot of updates. What the goal is, like I said, is to take it section by section, work on one section. We will need to get attorneys involved so that they can make sure that we're not only complying with state law, but that a lot of times, further sections of our code will reference that section, and so you want to make sure that you're tying all those pieces together, otherwise you have conflicts within your own code. So, the goal is to start on Title I now, hopefully, dependent upon funding, and then plan for, in the CIP, hopefully, to kind of get a bigger plan to do all of the rest of it next year. It will take a huge collaboration between all of the departments and council to work on that. There's not a goal to necessarily rewrite every section that we have in our code, because quite frankly, you can't do that- quite frankly, you can't do that in a year. That's a huge undertaking. But basically, to go through the sections that are in desperate need, our business licensing section and the main section are definitely in need of some updating because they've been neglected. But a lot of our other sections, we have updated as we went, but we haven't necessarily looked at the code as a whole to make sure that those pieces that are, have been changed are tied correctly to all the other sections of our code. So that will be more the intent as we go forward, is kind of looking at what we have, what council has already passed, and making sure that it's all structured correctly, it's in the right sections, and it's, it's referred to correctly in the other sections. So that's really the goal. Kelly Felkley will take the lead as your new city clerk, starting next week, but I wanted to make sure to kind of give you guys a heads up that it's coming. It will probably go to the ordinance committee as each section comes. But like I said, it's, it's a requirement by state code that we do it, and it needs to be done. So I would say if you have any areas that you have concern, I would send an email to Kelly and kind of give her a heads up so that they can certainly take a look at that section, maybe a little more in-depth than just doing the legal overview of it. But hopefully, in the next couple of months, you'll get a preview of Title I with thoughts. The best way to do that kind of thing is to look at best practices, look at what other cities across Iowa have done, refer to the state code as to what can be done, and then bring a draft forward. So that's really the, the goal, to get that before you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Suzie, these organizations we belong to, like the League of Cities and the National League of Cities, don't they have resources to help us? I would think there'd be somebody, a consultant, that would just, you hire the consultant, and he copies, you know what I mean, the best city in the state that has done it.
Yes, and, and that's actually, I mean, that's a huge part of it, like I said, and that's kind of where we were thinking that we would use our attorney, probably Chris Winland, just because he's got a really good understanding of our code and the state code to do that very thing. So we will look at, I mean, we'll use the resources from the league and all of that. We'll try to do as much of it in-house as we can, using those resources to keep the cost down, but then make sure that it's always reviewed by legal so that we don't pass something that we shouldn't be passing, or miss something that we should be, including. The league has a lot of good resources, and that's, quite frankly, where we'll probably get most of our ideas, because they do tend to bring best practices together in all of their publications that they have. So we will be using those resources.
Like they say, we don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Right.
We can just take, estimate, cost.
We don't have one at this time. We're literally at the beginning stages, but I wanted to make sure that council knew that it was coming. So that, that's kind of what we're working on, is to get an estimate so that we can include it with the CIP and all that sort of thing. I mean, it really depends on how deep into the code we get and how many changes we're wanting to make versus just doing an overview and checking things and maybe making a little tweak. You know, you, you can spend a lot or a little, and it depends how much of it we do in-house versus how much we're expecting somebody else to do.
Sure, but I mean, don't you have any, what it costs, what it audit costs, what it costs?
Ten years' worth.
What a settlement costs, what it costs, $10,000?
I can tell you about 10 years ago, I did it in another city, but it was a complete code rewrite, and we spent over $100,000 to have a complete code rewritten. I don't necessarily think that that's what the City of Waterloo needs to do at this time, is to have every section completely rewritten, because you guys do, and our department heads do a pretty good job of trying to keep their sections up.
Sure.
So more what you need to look at is making sure it all ties together correctly and that we're, you know, up to date with state law and that sort of thing. It's probably time to make some changes in our code where we're referencing state law versus quoting it, because every time then the state law changes, our code's out, out of date. So there's certain areas where, you know, we don't have a choice, you know, open meetings, open records, those kind of things. We don't need to reiterate it all in our code, we just need to say that we will follow the state law when it comes to those items, and then that keeps us from getting outdated.
And Chris can help us do that.
Absolutely, yep.
When, when do we have to have to have it done? End of 2017?
Yeah. I mean, the code just says every 10 years, so 2017 is that 10-year mark. So it needs to be done in 2017.
Suzie, do, do we have any idea, 10 years ago when this came up, what changes were made in our code of ordinances then?
I'm not aware of any that were made as a direct result of that. I'm not saying that there hasn't been any, because I haven't done extensive research on that, but I know there's a lot of sections that weren't touched. So my guess is they just kind of made sure that all of the code changes that had already been passed by council were included in there, but I don't know that it was necessarily really gone through. But I think it's time, because we've found a lot where, you know, either, again, it was from 1941, and it's not even, you know, our Title I is a prime example. It, it lists departments that don't exist. It talks about how the agenda's supposed to look, and that wouldn't be legal, we can't say no new business, old business, and not give anything more. So, I mean, I think it's time to truly take a look at it and make sure that we're meeting all those strict requirements when we do it.
Well, Director Tralka was here, I don't know, sometime in the past, and he had some ordinance that he was wanting to take off the books for that very reason. It was, you know, a gun club or something from 1941 or something.
And we have definitely done some. I mean, if you guys remember, we took ambulance, licensing ambulances off because the state regulates those. There's no point in us making, and we have our own ambulance service on top of it. So there's definitely some of those, and there, and there's some more. So that's really what we need to look at this time is, you know, one, are we regulating things we should be? And two, if we are regulating them, are we in compliance with all of the state and federal rules that are out there?
So Suzie, if I chose to sit down and go through page by page our code of ordinance, there, the probability is pretty high that I'm going to be reading stuff that doesn't even apply anymore.
You will find some things, yes. Like I said, individual departments have done a pretty good job of focusing on their areas, so there's not, there's not a ton. I would say the, the stuff that really is off is a little more inconsequential, so people haven't really paid attention to it, like our agenda. I mean, but there is a section of it that directly tells me how my agenda's supposed to look. So there are some things. The bigger piece of that is that the, what you're reading is probably accurate, but it may refer to a section that doesn't exist anymore or that's moved, those kinds of things. So those are the bigger issues that we need to make sure that everything is truly what it is. As a piece of that, too, I'm not sure how it's going to go, but it may, it may be explored is getting the building code and, or I'm sorry, the planning code and the traffic code, so that they kind of look and feel like the city code, so it's easier for citizens to find things, and then also get them electronic, because right now, the planning code is in a PDF, which is electronic, but it's not in the same structure as the city code, and the traffic code is, is not electronic at this time. So those are some things that need to be done. I mean, in this day and age, they should all be electronic and searchable and easy to access.
I was on planning and zoning about 10 years ago, and we did all of those, and it was a year-long meetings to get that changed, and I don't know, that was officially changed. I mean, it was just, because it was constant changing.
Yeah. I, I think the planning code has been updated in the last 10 years, but like I said, it's in a PDF version. It'd be nice to get it in the exact same structure as the city code so that they're easily accessed by our citizens, because our citizens have an expectation that they can go on our, online and find things, and sometimes that's kind of hard.
But it gets referenced to another code, and it's referenced, it's all, this is...
It is. It's very complex.
So a lot of changes from 1941 to 10 years ago, things are ever-changing, so we'll be taking a look at that over the next half-year, year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One quick question. Suzie, you said the funding for that comes from the CIP?
Potentially, we have, without having an estimate yet, because like I said, we're at the very early phase, phases of it. I'm not positive, I haven't had a chance. Michelle and I had a meeting scheduled for last week, but we got a flood, so that meeting was rescheduled, so we haven't really talked about the funding yet. I was hoping to have, have that conversation prior to this meeting, but I haven't had a chance to get the estimate, and I haven't had a chance to talk to her about funding. So it, it may be, depending on the estimate, it may be a general fund thing also, I'm not sure, but obviously, staff will do everything they can to keep the cost down, but you also don't want to make it an ineffective update. I mean, if, if we're going to do it, we need to do it right, so that it's a good code for the next 10 years.
Did Kelly know about this before she took the job?
The day after, we had a meeting.
Other duties as a senator.
Yeah.
All right, so the city code of ordinance changes now, oh, yeah, three, four minutes left, but then if you're, you're ready, throw.
I'm going to go to the podium, Mayor.
All right.
So I can more easily view my notes. Dan Tralka, Chief of Police for the City of Waterloo, and my presentation is about community policing. It's a presentation, and it's a conversation between myself and the council members. And this is so timely, because the mayor and I had talked, and we, I wanted to talk about community policing, because many people misunderstand it. It's a simple complex, yet it can be complex. Community policing is a strategy that focuses on police building ties and working closely with member of the communities. It's a philosophy. It's not necessarily a program, but programs support that philosophy. Some examples are, we brought some officers in from Racine a couple of years ago, and they have a program over there called Racine Cop Houses. It looked great, it was flashy, it got a lot of media attention. It seems to be working in Racine, but when me and my staff looked into it further, it's probably not the right program for Waterloo. As, as bad as some people think Waterloo is, we've never been as bad as Racine, Wisconsin. And their program's expensive, and looking at it, it's working good for them, as I said. In our opinion, it simply misplaced the problems they were having. The Waterloo Police Department wants to dig deeper than that. We want to have an impact on crime so it positively impacts the entire Cedar Valley. So things are better in Cedar Falls, things are better in Evansdale. I personally have a philosophy that we are the big brother for our smaller agencies in northeast Iowa, but we don't want our little brothers to take advantage of us and call us for every little problem they're having. And that has worked well for us. One example is when there was the bank robbery in Maynard, Iowa. The big brother Waterloo went up there, and, and I want to use big brother in the appropriate terms, we're a larger brother, or the older, wiser brother for our smaller police departments. Those suspects shot two police officers, and it was Waterloo police officers that took those two suspects into custody when we responded to their request for help. Some programs that we utilize for community policing are simple, like ride-alongs. Councilman Powers took advantage of our ride-alongs. He rode a little too long, he was out there for 13 hours. But it was an active, very busy night where we took four homicide suspects into custody, and I think he rode with three or four different officers that night, and I hope that was an eye-opening experience for him.
I'd be very proud of him.
What I find interesting is I've been a police officer for almost 30 years, I have always been a community policer. My personality is conducive to community policing. What's interesting is now that I'm in charge of a larger agency in Iowa, and, and many of the officers get it, but the, the vision I have sometimes takes a while to trickle down throughout the whole organization. And I've just told my command staff recently, as I have, actually within the past week and a half, I ex, I'm going to be delegating more to them, and I have higher expectations from them in regard to our community policing efforts. And our command staff gets it, but forcing that down to the lower levels sometimes can be challenging and takes time. Community policing is about partnerships. We have to partner with other organizations, like other law enforcement officers. And I feel like I've got a pretty good feel on the pulse of this community. Maybe not completely, but I've got a pretty good feel on the pulse of this community. And as we move forward, our community policing initiatives need to change. I want all of you to think back to, to 2009, and, and I'm going to jump around a little bit, but, but in 2009, our, our officers were involved in four officer-involved shootings. Since that time, we've averaged less than one a year. Back in May of, or April of 2010, we, we have what probably fits the definition of riot, a riot in one part of our city, where people were throwing bricks and rocks at squad cars. I think you'll recall back to the summer of 2010, in one of our business districts, right in our business districts, we were having fights, stabbings, shots fired, on a constant, regular basis. We've moved forward, things have gotten better. And that was when I first came here, and the one strategy I utilized is saturation patrols. I'd contact the State Patrol, I'd contact the Sheriff's Department, get marked cars into our city, and just be seen everywhere. That was fine then, but Waterloo has evolved beyond that point. We don't need saturation patrols in our city anymore. As a matter of fact, we're to a point where that would look bad. I've got my pulse on this community with, especially with Mayor Hart as our mayor, so we can have these brutally honest discussions and dialogues. And Waterloo's better than that. During this recent flood, there was concern that people would mess with our pumps as they're pumping water, and we said Waterloo's better than that. Believe it or not, our property crime rate is incredibly low. It's other areas that we need to address and work to improve upon. We need to have partnerships with community members. A good example of that is our neighborhood watch car. It doesn't get utilized all that much, but Jim Chapman's out, out there in it quite often. As a matter of fact, I, since it gets used so little, I said the city will pay for the gas. If the city doesn't pay for the gas, we'll find another way to pay for it. That's a good community partnership. Nonprofit providers can be a partnership. The media is a powerful partner for us, because the message we want to convey, convey to the community, we can do it through the media. Sometimes they're not so gracious with us, but that's, that's the era we live in. Now, I'm never going to give you, Dan Tralka's not going to give you excuses for what we can't accomplish, what we want to accomplish, but I am going to explain to you inhibitions. You know, we, we handle incredibly high call volume at the Waterloo Police Department. Generally, we handle about 220 calls a day. We have 1.8 officers per thousand residents. Nationally, for cities our size, it's 1.9. So we're at the lower end of the spectrum, we're covering 63 square miles. I just was told recently that the City of Minneapolis is 63 square miles. I know for a fact that Madison's 63 square miles. Now, of course, they don't have the concentration of people we have, but people expect our services still on the south side of town, and we have to respond to that. It thins our officers out. I'm not giving you excuses, I'm just explaining that's an inhibition we have. When it comes to civilian staff, most departments our size, 20% of the, of the organization is civilian. We're less than 10. I'm not giving you excuses, I'm explaining inhibition. I'm not going to come to you at budget time and say, I need 20 officers and I need 20 civilians. No. Dan Tralka is not going to bring you a problem without offering a solution. These are some of the challenges we have to deal with and face as we move forward, and I'm optimistic as we move forward that we're going to improve the good thing we already have. One, one aspect of community policing is increased officer accountability to the civilians that we're serving. That's one thing we struggle with in Waterloo because of the laws that are set up in Iowa. And I'm not using the laws set up in Iowa as an excuse, but it's an inhibition. I can do better as the Chief of Police to talk about the discipline I'm meting out to the officers. I want to be careful with it, because I don't want the community to think that we're a bunch of rogue officers creating a bunch of problems, because we've got 123 cops that are doing a darn good job, and in the past year, I've only had to discipline like five or six of them. But I do share data with the Human Rights Commission so that they can understand what's going on, and I can talk about accountability, accountability with the police department. But I need to spread that out further and talk to more groups, possibly the East Side Ministerial Alliance and others, so they can understand exactly what's going on with our department in, in regard to accountability, and some of the inhibitions we have with our laws, like explaining why employees are put on paid administrative leave. Decentralizing police authority is a part of community policing, empowering the officers so they can make decisions to help the community and the citizens solve their problems. We've slowly been overcoming that in, in Waterloo, because traditionally in law enforcement, there has been a lot of oversight, and, you know, the officers across the state, in the state of Iowa, weren't allowed to make critical decisions without a sergeant or lieutenant telling them they could make that decision. We're getting there in Waterloo. The one thing I've been telling the officers is, is from day one, is I don't need supervisors to supervise people, I need supervisors to... supervise situations. Our officers are empowered. They can go out there and do the job. But a situation is, and here's a good example of a situation, when a person's hair is pulled on, after a pursuit, that's a situation. And I need supervisors to supervise those situations. So we're, we're having a shift in our mindset, in our philosophy, based on my experience in Waterloo now. And we're, and conveying this message to the officers, it's slowly sinking in, but I need to express it more and more. And I like to come up with little catchphrases. The one that we're gonna start using now with the Waterloo Police Department is, every citizen contact should be an effort to engage in a community policing initiative, even if we're responding to a 911 call or whatever. Like I said, most of the officers get it. But some officers are caught in a mindset that's been prevalent in our profession for 10, 20, 30, 40 years, and it takes time to overcome that. But the one comment I've been making recently is, our African-American residents don't want to be policed. They want to be protected. And we need to remember that. Too many times, we are fishing with a net. And we realize we need to fish with a fishing pole. Traffic stops is a good example. Stopping people for burned-out license plates in one area of town, doing six or seven or eight of those a night, that's fishing with a net. We need to be wiser. We need to be smarter. We need to fish with a pole. And we realize that. However, the officers still need to hold individuals accountable. One of the first philosophies I brought to this police department with the officers is, and we're not saying we're going soft on crime. That's not true at all. We need to hold people accountable. And one of the first philosophies I brought to this police department is, we need to hold the worst of the worst accountable. And there's a three-pronged component to the worst of the worst. Number one is if the person is a felon or a gang member, that's the first component. Now, if you've been, some might, believe it or not, some of my best friends are convicted felons, as crazy as that sounds. These are people I go to church with. They've rediscovered their purpose in life and they're productive members of society. So I'm not saying if you're convicted of a felony or if you have been a gang member, you're, you're a bad person. What I'm saying is if you're an active felon or an active gang member, number one, that's the first prong, who continues to engage in criminal behavior? That's the second prong. And the third prong is you use a weapon or violence while you're engaging in this criminal behavior, the Waterloo Police Department, being ethical, moral, and legal, is going to catch you and we're gonna hold you accountable. And if that means you ultimately being convicted and sent to prison, so be it. Now, some of you, oh, there was a theory, there's a theory that has been around in law enforcement for 20, 30 years called the broken window theory. Some officers, we sometimes convolute that theory. That theory basically is if you take care of the small things in your community, the larger things will fall into place. They call it broken window theory, like if, if you see many broken windows in your community or in your neighborhood, that's not really illegal, but it looks bad. And if we fix those broken windows, everything else will fall into place. Law enforcement has convoluted that. Some members of law enforcement have convoluted that by thinking, okay, so if I write a bunch of tickets for burned-out taillights, we'll have fewer homicides. No. I'm not a big advocate of the broken window theory. As a matter of fact, more and more police executives across the country are feeling the same way I am, because the broken window theory tends to lead to fishing with a net instead of fishing with a fishing pole. And we're going through a transformation where we're gonna start fishing with a fishing pole more often than fishing with a net. Now, some of you may ask, well, how do you evaluate whether your policing, whether your community policing programs are working or not? Well, we have metrics. We keep statistics. We have data that we track so we can see if we're being effective. And again, I want you to think back to 2009, 2010. From 2009 to 2015, and we don't have our 2016 data yet, or 2016 data yet, because the year's not complete. But the year 2015 is complete, so we have our complete data from 2015. We have our complete data from 2009. Use of force by Waterloo police officers 2009 to 2015 is down 60%. Complaints filed by citizens against officers from 2009 to 2015 is down 43%. Juvenile arrest is down 44% between those two years. And it's not that we're letting juveniles off with a slap on the wrist. Juveniles are literally committing fewer crimes. And we're offering more diversion programs. And I'm gonna go off-track here a little bit again. As we move forward, there are a couple of things, we realize where our weaknesses are. All right? When we're talking about juvenile diversion programs, we need, there are many programs that Juvenile Court Services offers. As we proceed in the future, Waterloo, the Waterloo Police Department wants to get involved in those diversion programs and have officers presenting the diversion program to these juveniles who are on the fence, who could go either way. And that's community policing because these juveniles get to know the officer as a person. But the flip side of it is, that officer gets to know that juvenile as a person. So it's two-side, two-sided. It's effective. So as we proceed in the future, we're gonna get involved with JCS, Juvenile Court Services, to officer our own juvenile diversion program or component of it that they can utilize. Because the one problem I've been having is getting these kids who are on the fence to come to the table. You know, we can have all the programs that we want, but if we can't get these kids to come to the table, we've got nobody to talk to. Well, if they're involved in the juvenile court system, they're being forced to come to the table. And that's an opportunity for us. All arrests, all arrests in Waterloo from 2009 to 2015 is down, are down 23%. Again, we're not slap, we're not giving people a slap on the wrist. People are committing fewer crimes in Waterloo. Our crime rate is down 22% since 2009. Disorderly conduct is down, it's, it's down 81%, which I think is just amazing. The stats for homicides nationally just came out this morning. Nationally, our homicide rate across the country is up 11%. Mayor, I don't wanna curse us, 'cause I told the mayor just a month ago, I says, Mayor, we haven't had a homicide all year. We've had one homicide in Waterloo this year. And we took four people who we feel are responsible for that into custody. Where we had some challenges is our shootings. And I've told the public through the media, I've told our, told our council, our shootings are generally gang-related. We generally know who's responsible for our shootings. We just need to develop legal, ethical, and moral information to hold them accountable. To hold our worst of the worst accountable. These guys, and we don't have, believe, you know, we don't have women shooting up houses. It's young men. So right there, we can, I think in Waterloo, we can, we've got 34,000 potential suspects. But we can narrow that down even further based on the intelligence we have and the information we utilize. 30 to 50 people are causing the majority of our violent crime problems in Waterloo. And we've been doing a pretty good job of holding them accountable, but we realize we need to do a better job. But the good news is, our shootings this year compared to last year are down 22%. So we are making headway. We're making a difference. We have come a long way in six and a half, seven years. We, we have a lot of work to do and we realize that. And, and one deficiency that is abundantly clear to us, and we're coming up with ways to address this and move forward, is we need to do a better job of educating the community why we do what we do. When we pull you over for speeding, we need to do a better job of, of having you realize why we might ask you out of that car, or why we might ask for your identification. Now, we've adjusted some of our policies to address some of our deficiencies, but we need to do a better job of educating the public. What I've been telling the officers is I say, listen, all you guys know how to play Monopoly. Would it be fair to play Monopoly with people who don't know, don't know the rules of the game? So we need to explain those rules a lot better. We know that's a deficiency of ours. Last week, you've heard some people who were very critical of myself and Waterloo Police Department. We are actually coming up with ways, through my command staff, to work with them, the people that were critical of me and this police department, to be a part of the solution. We're seeing a lot of passion in this community right now. We wanna struck the, we're gonna strike the iron while it's hot. We wanna bottle that passion, do whatever we can to do with it, and move this city forward. So the whole past week and a half, the whole past, the past two weeks was a blessing for this community. And we're gonna seize the moment. One goal I have is, in discussion with the mayor, is I wanna start a police foundation. And the purpose of the police foundation is to utilize private funds that the police command staff can use with their discretion for community policing initiatives. Let's say an officer wants to have pizza with kids who are at risk to join a gang, or two or three officers. Well, we can use these discretionary funds to go have pizza with that kid. So we've got a lot going on. You wanted to hear plans? Plans don't solidify overnight, but we have a vision. The plans are coming. We wanted to let you know what's going on. And now I will entertain absolutely any questions anybody has.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Land.
Chief Trelka, a couple of things. There was a, the Department of Justice, there's somebody came in here under Mayor Clark's reign at the end. Did that report give us any help? I never saw that report, but did that?
It did. It did. As a matter of fact, we're gonna utilize that as we move forward. We did a lot of it. Some we couldn't afford to do, and others we're still tackling. Another thing, initiative we're gonna use is, citizens are gonna, identified citizens are going to work with me to look at our policies. What's nice is our policies are public records, so there's no confidentiality issues. So the mayor and I are gonna identify some citizens that can work with me to review policies, especially use-of-force policies, and we'll also use this group to talk about current issues and concerns at the Waterloo Police Department.
Then you, you talked about staffing. And I've noticed, when we hire new policemen and firemen, they, a lot of them seem to be college graduates nowadays. Are we getting a more, I mean, is the police force evolving into more talented new recruits that maybe have a little different outlook on, you know what I'm trying to say?
They do.
It's not like the old top sergeant that's been there for 30 years.
Yeah. They're thinkers and they're empowered. All of you have been on Waterloo for a while. I mean, think of that officer we had 20, 30 years ago. And one thing that comes to my mind is you've all heard about the elevator ride. That's not appropriate. Roughing somebody up in the elevator as you're coming up to the third floor of City Hall. Those were the types of officers that worked in this country and, and this city 30 years ago. Our officers now are, the officers were, and I'm very critical when I hire, because what I've noticed is whenever I terminate an employee, that employee never should have been hired in the first place. And I've, and I don't necessarily always terminate somebody. I like to say, sometimes we transition employees out. We give them an out. When I terminate or transition employee, as they're walking away and I let them leave with their dignity, I'm also thinking that, boy, this is a person we never should have hired. So I gotta hire smarter. And, and it's something I've been pretty successful at doing, is hiring the right employees. My very first hire here was Mark Jasper, who Councilman Powers rode with. And I've probably hired 25, 30 cops since I've come here. And I've got a pretty good track record with my young officers. We lack diversity, but Mayor Hart and I have talked about a solution to that as well. There's more we need to do, but we're adjusting our process a little bit so we can encourage more people of color, more minority candidates to apply with us and be successful.
When, when you talked about staffing, I thought of an organization I was with before where they went away from the top-heavy management down to more frontline employees that interacted with the public. Or, or is that an idea we should pursue to get more cops on the street and less, you know, bureaucrats back in the office? Or is that, is that not a problem?
The problem, we, we're, I need supervisors to supervise situations. And I have, one problem we have in patrol is I'll have a patrol sergeant supervising seven patrol officers. That's a very broad span of control. It's too big. So I'm trying to come up with creative, palatable ways to address that, to fix it. Because we had a couple of challenges with lawsuits where I felt the situations weren't supervised appropriately because we, our supervisors and our managers' span of control was too broad. So I have, we're going to address that. Policies, you know, our call volume is, is very high. So how can I come up with policies that limit that? A good, a good example is gas drive-offs. In the past, we used to get a lot of calls about gas drive-offs, and it was overwhelming us. So we came up with a policy that basically says, if you can't give us information to show us that this is a crime, we're not going to respond to the call. Because with most of the calls, we were becoming a collection agency for the gas station. And somebody might say, well, isn't that community policing if you're helping them out? No. Believe it or not, and I've had to tell people this lately, believe it or not, we're still the police. We can't be a collection agency for certain businesses. And I'm not disparaging the gas stations, but we had to adjust our policies so that we wouldn't have as many calls for service because we want to engage in more community policing initiatives. So we're gonna look at some policy development that would help us in that regard, fewer calls.
Five, 10, Tom, if it's, I mean, Mr. Land, if we could let one other person ask another question. This is just a first conversation from many conversations that we're going to have as a council. We've already had a couple that we're going to have as a community moving forward. So if you want, you can talk to the chief afterward. We'll take one more before we get to our next meeting.
I guess I just had a real quick conceptual question, chief. You know, virtually every statistic you went through, the trend is going in the right direction. Some dramatically, others, I mean, virtually every, every number is going in the right direction. So I guess I'm a little bit perplexed. It sounds to me like what we're doing is we're doing the right thing, but you're telling me we're gonna change what we're doing. So I don't know if you can speak to that a little bit, or maybe you can do that the next time you give a presentation.
It evolves. My answer to that is it evolves. Because we had an uptick in shootings. And a good example of the evolution is back when I believed that saturation patrols were good. For the time in the era, back six years ago, they were good. That's not good for the time and era where we are. We're going in the right direction, but we, we need to, we need to adjust. And this is such a, law enforcement is exciting and very dynamic. And the one thing I've developed a good skill at is cause and effect. Because I have to be careful in the action I take so that it doesn't have negative consequences for the organization or the city. And I've become very good at that. But I'm cautious in my approach to the changes I make.
And so we can have the continuation question. We actually have a finance meeting at 5:10. Did you want to?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add that I've got three questions for sure, but I, I hope that I can have some time after the meeting to talk to Chief Trelka.
If not today, because we got 15 minutes before the council meeting starts, and we have two other, one other one. So, I mean, he's here.
Yeah.
So we can talk.
Motion for adjournment.
Okay, if I'm saying all in favor?
Aye.
Very adjourned.
Let's call our finance committee to orders. Today is September 26. Adam Kirkpatrick, read the roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Jacob?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Welber?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the approval of the agenda and approve the minutes of September 19th, 2016, as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the agenda and the minutes. Questions? Very not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign, that motion passes. Travel requests. One of you take that?
I'll take those if it's okay. Bob Osgood, chief plumbing inspector, to attend a class here in Waterloo, with costs not to exceed $120 on September 24. Fire chief, Trilor, Fire Services, and one EMS personnel to attend a class, WAVE, ESO, EPCR, in Austin, Texas, dates November 16th through the 19th. Amount taught to exceed $2,970. Heather Senkavich, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce that name. Close enough. Close enough. Performance artist, class meeting to attend a performance art series, destination Waterloo, cost not to exceed $125. Sarah Burkelsey, performance arts, class meeting, performance destination is Waterloo, amount not to exceed $125. Belta Orma, performance artist, class meeting here in Waterloo, cost not to exceed $190.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on all the travel requests, or any questions or discussion on any of those. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, those motions passed. Pre-oths, please.
Mr. Chairman, pre-oths to expend over $1,000. Building maintenance, $4,189.05 plus $100 shipping handling for emergency repair for the variable speed drives for air handler units, one and two at five Selvin Brothers Convention Center, central garage, $2,537.21 transmission for police department pickup truck. Leisure services, $5,200. Replacement plow for truck number 418. Also, leisure services, $4,995.12 for removal of deteriorating limestone rock wall adjacent to the parking lot at Urborn Pro Shop, and replacement with modular black wall. Safety committee, $3,000. Safety in the workplace, loss control training. Sewer department, $4,046 for renewal of three Cartiflex subscriptions for a one-year term, August 1, 2016 to July 31, 2017. Sewer department, $6,300 for a Canon IRC 5535i printer scanner from Advanced Systems Incorporated.
Second. We have a motion, a second on all the pre-oths, any questions or discussion on any of those items? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, those motions. Pre-oths are paid. There's no budget line item amendments this week, but we do have the bills payment, and the bill's payment is $1,923,671.58. That's 1,923,671.58. Second. We have a motion, a second on the bill's payment. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adjournment.
Second. We have a motion, a second on adjournment, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Everyone, hopefully you can hear me. Welcome to this week's council meeting. We have a pretty packed agenda this afternoon, but Ms. City Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Absolutely. Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
All right, thank you. Now I would ask if you want to rise, or if you want to sit, it's absolutely up to you. We've had a lot of things taking place this week within our communities to the north, and coming up to the south within Cedar Rapids and surrounding areas with regards to the floods, so we ask that you would keep them in mind as you have your moment of silence. All right, thank you. And now we have our pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Airport Director Keith Caspary.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Welper.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have three items. The first item is a flood update from Mayor Hart. Added within 24 hours notice to allow the mayor to update the council and the public on the status of the flood in Waterloo. Amend item number 17, fire code ordinance amendment. It is correct electronically and on hard copy, but it is to amend the correct number of readings of ordinance from two to three. Item number 18, building code ordinance amendment. Again, it is correct electronically as well as hard copy. To amend to the correct, the number of readings on the ordinance from two to three, and also the approval of the minutes of September 19, 2016, regular session as proposed.
Second. Mr. Welper, I did just speak with someone in the audience, and I don't know if it's part of the protocol, but I would like to move our flood update to after the proclamations, and also allow Mental Illness Awareness Week to go first. There's a time conflict, and they've discussed it and are in agreement with that. I need to be.
Fine.
Okay. All right. We have an agenda, an amended one, and minutes. All in favor?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I could just ask a real quick question. I don't know if this is for Suzie or Mr. Zellifer, but looking at the minutes of last week's meeting, and it was a rather lengthy meeting, especially with the oral comments, but I guess I was curious, what is the actual purpose of the minutes as far as their presentation or coverage of, you know, what was said? Because I didn't think those minutes were what I would want to call exactly, I don't know if I'd say correct, but accurate of what was said by certain people, and I just didn't know to what degree.
Enough detail.
That, yeah. Yeah.
The purpose of minutes is to catch the action. So what we typically do, and I apologize, I haven't read last Monday's minutes because I wasn't here, but what we typically do is we do summary minutes. So we summarize the conversations that are taking place. We capture the actual action that takes place. I mean, you all know how I do my minutes, and if you have suggestions of things being changed, I can certainly work with Kelly. I, again, haven't looked at last time's minutes, but what we typically do is summary minutes, so we capture who spoke and the topic that they spoke on, and kind of give it the feel of which direction, whether they were opposed or in favor of something. But other than that, it's not to give verbatim minutes. Our minutes are, our meetings are online electronically, so anybody can watch them and get the word-for-word version. So we do typically try to summarize to get the gist of what somebody was giving for presentation.
All right. Counsel, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. And the first item I would like to ask, Leslie Cohn, Executive Director for National Alliance on Mental Illness with Black Hawk County, to please come on up and join me. How are you today?
Okay.
All right, I have a proclamation. Whereas mental health is part of overall health, and whereas one in five adults experience mental illness in a given year, and approximately half of chronic mental illness begins by age 14 and 3/4 by age 24, and whereas long delays, sometimes decades, often occur between the time symptoms first appear and when individuals get help, and whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States, the second leading cause among young adults, and 90% of persons who die by suicide have underlying mental illness, and whereas early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental illness and recovery, and whereas it is important to maintain mental health and learn the symptoms of mental illness in order to get help when it is needed, and whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping and the silent, helping in the silence and stigma that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help, and whereas public education and civic activities can encourage mental health and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim October 2 through the 8, 2016, as Mental Health, Mental Illness Awareness Week. So Ms. Leslie, why don't you please let us know what's going on?
Can people hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. I tend to not have that issue in terms of being heard. My name is Leslie Cohn. I am the executive director and only staff member for NAMI Black Hawk County, or National Alliance on Mental Illness, and everyone else who does work for the organization is a volunteer. Mental Illness Awareness Week is a national initiative, where, so NAMI's affiliates across the country, like ours, NAMI Black Hawk County, have activities and recognize mental illness and the need to fight against the stigma surrounding the disease and help people with recovery. The main thing to say that we have going on that week is we will have Joan Becker speaking on Tuesday, October 4, at the First Congregational Church at 608 West Fourth Street, and she will be speaking at 7 o'clock. So that is our main activity during that week. And otherwise, I appreciate the time and acknowledgement of Mental Illness Awareness Week by the Waterloo City Council and the mayor. Thank you very much.
Can you give us contact information?
I sure can. I didn't, I was trying to be brief, but thank you. You're doing my job better than I am. We are housed at Allen Hospital, and our phone number is 235-5263. That's 235-5263. If you want more information or to receive our bi-monthly newsletter, just contact that phone number, and thank you.
All right. And thank you for all your efforts. And there was one sentence that I forgot to read about Mental Illness Awareness Week.
That's okay.
And it is, "To shine a light on mental illness and fight stigma, provide support, educate the public, and advocate for equal care." So thank you for all you do in helping our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, and now we have a proclamation for Earth Science Week. So Sherman Lundey, would you please come join us?
I have two friends.
Okay, all right. All right. Whereas the geosciences are integral to our understanding of our world and the universe that surround us, and whereas the geosciences provide insight into the management of our natural resources, and whereas the geosciences aid in the responsible development and use of our natural resources, and whereas the geosciences provide us with an overview of our interactions with the hydrosphere, atmosphere, and biosphere, and whereas the geosciences encourage stewardship and conservation of our mineral, mineral soil, water, and energy resources, and whereas our geoscience heritage continues to help us to discover more effective ways of understanding, studying, managing, and using, and conserving our natural resources. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the second week in October as Earth Sciences Week. So Sherman, tell us what's going on.
Very good. I have two speakers with me. The first speaker is Bobby Minard, who is a senior in the Earth Science Department at the University of Northern Iowa. Bobby?
Who needs them? Am I right? Wrong. Wrong. Everything that we use in our daily life is either a product grown or mined from the earth. Geology at large is the science that deals with the earth's physical structure and substance and the processes that act on it. It is earth history. It's a part of the story that we missed and are desperately trying to understand how it can impact our future. I'm a senior at U and I, and over the past four years, I've fostered a deep passion for the stories that come from these little lumps of rock, and I've worked very hard to understand them. As a result, it has deeply influenced my character and those around me. Friends can't take me anywhere, families can't escape my rock puns, and people on the plains will never get the window seat. Whether or not you realize it, it's had an effect on your life as well. Whether or not you realize it, it's had an effect on your life as well. Who we are is defined by where we grew up. Maybe it's not the sole cause of your character, but there's a shade of you that's been colored by your environment. I grew up in Waterloo, divided by the Cedar River and shielded by golden fields of corn. That means that according to the 2010 census, I have something in common with at least 68,366 people. To those living in Newton, Iowa, where our pearly white windmills are built and now supply 31% of our energy needs, geoscience is a lifeblood industry to producers and consumers. For those affected by the recent and the 2008 floods, perhaps this means something a little bit different. The importance of geoscience to them is being able to predict when something terrible might happen. The ability to understand the issues of living in a dynamic world when we are desperately trying to make it static. In Flint, Michigan, geoscience is directly related to the health of family, friends, and neighbors when searching for drinkable water. It's the dark realization that some of the natural resources we take for granted are just that, granted to us by the earth and limited. In Beijing, China, wherein estimated 1.6 million people die per year because of poor air quality, earth science is a permeating fact of life that is unavoidable and unstable. Understanding geoscience is not just understanding human problems with the environment, it's also applying human curiosity to our physical world. It's a kid standing on the edge of the Grand Canyon and coming to the incredible realization that it was only a river with time and pressure that created the cliffs below. It's the concrete we walk on, the rich soils from which we grow our crops, and the soft and lush prairies we drive along. Geoscience is our world. It's what connects 7 billion people. No matter which shade of earth science has colored your life, there's still a piece of you that has been affected. It's why I've devoted my life to science. It's the history that created us and the future that will define us.
Bobby. Our second visitor is Les Talkedy. I will report. I have to get it out of the way.
Do I need to move? Oh, my God. Oh, okay. Okay. There we go.
Our second speaker is not as vocal and as talented as our first. The geosciences have often been reflected in our concept of looking at the past. With me is Crocodillus phosphaticus, about a 65 million-year-old croc from the Cretaceous in Morocco. But in actuality, the geosciences are exceedingly important for us understanding the past so we can live in the present and plan for the future, and that's the purpose of Earth Science Week. On behalf of the Earth Science Week Committee, we extend our appreciation to you, Mr. Mayor, for this proclamation declaring the second week in October as Earth Science Week. You and the public are invited to our Sunday at the Quarry program on October 2nd, that's this coming Sunday, as part of Earth Science Week, and having the capacity to interact with various geoscience organizations and collecting a rock or fossil as well. By the way, the Flood Center, Iowa Flood Center, will be there to help go over with the public issues in regards to this flood. The theme this year is our geoscience heritage. Our geoscience heritage includes understanding our geological past, uncovering and managing the wise use of our mineral resources, working to keep our waters safe for the future, exploring farm practices to improve our food supply and protect our soils, adopting wise land use policies, and continuing to explore our world and even outer space. Remember, we're all geoscientists. Understanding and managing the world around us is our responsibility.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. I didn't know what you, it was green when it came off the box, so... But, you know, thank you, thank you very much for the presentation, all that you're also doing with students to make sure they're aware of our environment, you know, you even touched on the boundaries. I never really thought about being bounded by cornfields as well, but thank you so much for all that you're doing for our community to make sure that we're aware of our geosciences and how it has an impact on our lives. Thank you.
And now we will have Mary Potter.
Would you please come up and join us for Life Insurance Awareness Month? And you have a visitor with you as well.
I'm the number-one man in our association.
Okay, there we go. There we go.
This is Matt Monahan. He's the president of...
Monahan.
Good name.
John?
Relative, yes.
Okay, okay, Matt, okay. All right. Here we go. Whereas life insurance helps safeguard families' financial security, and nearly 80% of U.S. households have some form of life insurance coverage, and whereas the life insurance industry is a primary source of financial and retirement security to more than 75 million American families, and whereas the life insurance industry pays billions to beneficiaries each year, and whereas life insurance benefits are a tremendous source of financial relief and security to families who lose a loved one, and whereas many Americans lack adequate life insurance coverage or have no life insurance, and whereas during times like these, when many families are struggling, life insurance is more important than ever in the event of a premature death, and whereas during times like these, and whereas September 2016 has been designated as Life Insurance Awareness Month with the goal of making, making consumers more aware of their life insurance needs. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim September 2016 as Life Insurance Awareness Month, and ask our citizens to learn more about life insurance and its benefits. And here to tell us more about life insurance is Mr. Monahan.
Thank you, Mayor Hart. I guess Life Insurance Awareness Month for us at NAFSA, so that's the National Association of Insurance and Financial Advisors here in the Cedar Valley, which we have a couple hundred members of that, that we meet once a month and in collaboration and speak and grow about what is going on in our community and how we can help further our clients' financial well-being. Life insurance has a large impact on that. As Mayor Hart said, you know, many people have life insurance, but many people don't have the right amount, and they don't know what amount they should have. One in three people do not have adequate amounts and would be financially impacted immediately by a family member predeceasing them, obviously, and their family in death. So the majority of the reason people don't have it is because they haven't reached out to someone and been educated on the right amount they should have or kind. So we invite everyone in the Cedar Valley to find someone who's a credentialed professional to understand what that amount should be and be educated to make sure that their family and loved ones are taken care of here in this time of Life Insurance Awareness Month. So thank you, Mayor Hart, and the City of Waterloo.
No comments, Mayor?
I don't know what to say.
Okay, okay.
I have nothing to say except what he said.
Did it all. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for the awareness. Thank you. Great presentation. Right now, I'd like to give just a brief flood update and have staff make comments as well. As you know, over the course of the last week, we have been very busy. Mother Nature has spoken, and we have done our best to try to make sure that we mitigate any challenges that we've seen with our recent, recent flooding or high levels of our river. But what I'd like to do, we had a press release today, just want to read it for people that didn't get an opportunity to see it yet, and then we'll have some additional staff comments to talk about where we're at as well. But the City of Waterloo, is this September, is that the right date?
Today's the 26th.
City of Waterloo has closed Fletcher Avenue from University Avenue to Highway 63 due to flooding of Black Hawk Creek. We have urged all to obey our road close signs as they are posted. The following bridges, if not have been open, will be open a little bit later today. 18th Avenue Bridge is open. Westfield, 18th Street is open. 11th Street, I believe, is, is open right now. Westfield Avenue is open, and that bridge, East 4th, 5th, and 6th Bridges, Conger Avenue, Conger, and Highway 63, of course, as you know, remain open. The Downtown Railroad Bridge will, will be open tomorrow, and Park Avenue, I will continue to monitor that, and hopefully soon we can get that open as well, which will be our last one. Any questions or concerns you have about sewer-related problems, we have asked that you call 291-4553, 291-4553. For emergency street closures or sandbagging-related questions, call 291-4267. We've been continuously asking people not to drive or walk through floodwaters, and please stay away as much as you can away from the river at this time. One of the things that we are still noticing, and we'll have Eric Thorson come up and talk in just a few moments, that the water, the waters are still raging, and they're still not safe, so we want to give that information out to the public. Citizens that are affected by flood, by the flood, may pick up cleanup kits with items like bleach and mops in Cedar Falls at the shelter of the West Gym on the UNI campus or at Fire Station Number One, and that's downtown Waterloo, 425 East 3rd Street. If you're seeking assistance with flood cleanup, please contact Operation Threshold. That telephone number is 319-291-2065. That's 319-291-2065. Flood damage items can be disposed of at the National Cattle Congress at 257 Ainsborough Avenue. Residents' name and address will be required to drop items off. The site will be open from 10:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. Tuesday, September 27, 2016, until Sunday, October 9, 2016. Clean sandbags that have not been used can be dropped off at 1314 Black Hawk Street in the fenced-in area, and all other sandbags will need to be disposed of at the Black Hawk County Landfill or can be replaced, can be placed curbside, and a pickup schedule will be announced at a later time. We will continue to monitor and provide updates as more information becomes available. But what I would like to say before we ask Eric to come up, our city engineer, is I'm absolutely proud of our city staff for the City of Waterloo. People have worked so hard, they have done so much to try to take the lessons that we had from 2008 and try to apply those to this situation. I was, had seen people working long shifts, long hours, going above and beyond the call of duty to make sure that the city's safe. We have seen volunteers from VGM, from Hy-Vee, from Chick-fil-A, from a myriad of other places, Little Caesars, that have come on and make sure that people that have volunteered or that were working had water, food, and all the things they needed to do to do their job as well. Our own DOT came through for us and made sure that they had a site readily accessible for sandbagging, and the number of young people, the number of volunteers, you know, just further goes to prove how great a community the City of Waterloo is. We may, we may fight from time to time, but when it comes time to making sure that we protect one another, that we are each other's brothers or sisters keeper, people have shown themselves to make sure that that comment is actually true. So I am proud of our city and our city council members that have stepped up with our city workers to make this happen. But we are not out of the woods yet. We still have some work to go, and I would like to have Eric Thorson come up right now to talk about our rivers and where we're at with that as well.
Hi, Eric Thorson, City Engineer. As the mayor said, it's sunny out and it's dry, and we're starting to see some of the bridges open and some of the closure structures come down, but we're still in a flood situation. As of 5:02 p.m. today, the river gauge is at 20.3 feet. Now, that's actually a little higher than it was earlier this morning when it was down to 20.1. So you can see, we've still got some pretty high water out there. The crest has passed, but the river is staying kind of high. It's projected right now that we'll drop before, below flood stage at about 5:00 p.m. on Friday. Earlier today, we thought that was going to happen on Thursday. So the river, again, is staying a little higher than we anticipated for a little longer period of time. Actually, 20.3 would still be the seventh-highest flood in history, so you have to kind of take that into perspective. We've still got a flood situation on our hands. Staff is out monitoring, pumping, doing all the other activities that are required for a flood. I know everybody would like to start cleaning up and getting things cleared away and kind of put this behind us, but, you know, we're still in a pretty serious flood situation. It will be for the next several days. So, you know, please have patience. You know, we'll get to everything with the cleanup and stuff, but we're still fighting the flood right now. So be safe out there, stay away from the water, obey the different signs and things that are going on out there.
Eric, just so people can get an understanding, what is, what is the regular flood stage?
Regular flood stage is 13 feet.
Right. So we're still seven point something higher than regular flood stage, which means we still have a ways to go, and we are continuously monitoring what's going on, but we're still taking this very seriously, even though there seems to be a general calm within the community. All right. Sandy, do you have any updates for us as well? Tom, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I was just going to ask what I asked you before. Eric, do we lower the dam? I know the Cedar Rapids opens their dam up. Do we lower ours?
Actually, the dam that we constructed a few years old in Waterloo lowers itself automatically. So when it realizes there's more water flowing over the dam than there should be, it starts going down by itself, and obviously that was checked to make sure that was happening. So it is down. We'll raise it back up at some point, although we're not very far away from the time of the year when we would be lowering it down anyway for the winter. So we'll have some discussions on that, but it is currently down.
Thank you.
All right. Sandy, you want to give us an update?
Sandy Greco, Superintendent of Traffic. As the mayor stated, we did open 18th Street. We just got 11th Street opened, the bridges today, and, and Westfield. There still may be some sand out there, so please drive carefully over the bridges. We've swept them, but we're going back tomorrow to sweep them again. The reason we are asking for names and addresses at the cleanup site at the Cattle Congress Grounds, we have four dumpsters out there, is because this will give city staff an idea in an area of where damages did occur, so we can look at those areas in the future to see if there's any repairs or anything that we can do. Also, I will have a schedule out, hopefully tomorrow, as to when we will start picking up sandbags curbside. We just, we haven't had time to schedule all that stuff yet. We've still been out working and opening streets. River Road did open up today, so that's a major road that we have back open. I think that's about it. You kind of covered everything else.
Counsel, you have any questions about where we're at at this point? All right, thank you. And we, we, if there's no other questions about this particular area, if you just bear with me for just a couple more moments, Counsel, I have a presentation that I would like to make right now. It's like a little opportunity for, a privilege to do this, and I'm going to ask Susie Scherz to come on up, come on up front with me as well.
That's nice. You don't forget to study boss for four more days.
As, as you know, Susie, Susie has played such a valuable role within the City of Waterloo. She started here as city clerk as, how many years ago?
Almost seven.
Almost seven years ago. Last several years, we added on to those responsibilities, and she also became the HR Director for the City of Waterloo. And if you know anything about business or city government or business in general, those are two huge positions to have at one time. And I'll probably say she's tackled, tackled that challenge head-on, and it's probably has done one of the best jobs that you can possibly do with... of the best jobs that you can possibly do with a situation as such. She is a valued team member, has done several different things by bringing this city council up to the 21st century with regards to technology, and working with contract negotiations that we can move forward with our employees for the next several years. But it's hard for me to put into words exactly the impact that she's had on the City of Waterloo, the many things that she's done, and the many people's lives on not just the professional level, but also on a personal level here within the City of Waterloo. And I think that's very, very worthy of the time she's given. I think it's very worthy of seeing her do sandbags all the way up to her last weekend working with the City of Waterloo, taking on a lot of responsibility. So, you know, from a personal and professional, I'm absolutely fortunate that I had the opportunity to be able to work with her over the course of the last several years. She's just a valuable team member, and I think our staff will agree with that sentiment as well. I have a certificate of appreciation presented to Susie Scherz by the City of Waterloo on this 26th day of September, 2016, in appreciation of your service, dedication, and loyalty in serving the citizens of Waterloo as city clerk and as Human Resources Director. And I think we have a small trinket of our appreciation coming before you say a couple The Diet Pepsi will probably last her about a week and a half. But we can never repay you for all you've done, but we wanted to give you a small token. So, comments.
Wow. Takes a lot to make me speechless before Casey Pop will do it. I just want to say thank you. It's been a pleasure serving my hometown. This is where I grew up. This is where I live and plan to live for a while. And I definitely couldn't have done it without my employees and all of the employees in the City of Waterloo. They've allowed me to make a lot of changes and add competition in everything I do, whether it be from having a canned food drive. We couldn't just have a regular one. I made everybody build them into sculptures to see who could do the best one, to lunch breaks having to become beanbag tournaments, which somebody had to cheat to take my championship away from me. But I want to thank all of the employees. I want to thank the citizens who have made this one of the most challenging positions I've ever had, but I've loved every minute of it. To this council and the former council, people that I've worked with, it's been a great ride, and I encourage you to do great things. If I can part with any words of wisdom, I've been in the public sector for 15 years, and I would say we need to tell our story, our council, our employees, and our citizens. We need to make sure we're focusing on the positive. Don't forget about the negative and work towards changing that. But if we all could focus on the positive and tell our story, because we are a great city, and we can do great things if we can keep that in mind in all of our day-to-day actions, we'll continue to move forward. So, thank you.
What are you moving into? What are you going to?
I'm opening a Pet Supplies Plus store in Cedar Falls, so please, everybody, come support my store. We'll be opening many more, but the first one is opening in Cedar Falls in November. And totally different world, but completely excited.
All right. We're sure you'll be successful. All right. Thank you. Thank you all for your patience as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's Items 1 through 3. And within the consent agenda is the bill's payment. The bill's payment this week is $1,923,671.58. That's 1,923,671.58.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Any comments? Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right. Consent agenda approved.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item Number 2 is a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's for the fiscal year 2017 Burns and Gates Pool Painting Project, Contract Number 923.
Second.
All right. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries. We now have a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on behalf of this particular item or have questions? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid document, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Motion has been made with the proper second. Any questions, counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right. That item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Motion has been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right. That item carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to leisure services for review.
I second.
That motion has been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. There were... The bid estimate is for $65,000. There were three bids. The first bid is from Postfacile Painting, Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. The bid bond was for 5% and the bid amount was for $94,500, 94,500.00. The second bid was from ACO Unlimited Corporation of Johnston, Iowa. The bid bond was for 5% and the bid amount was for $62,829, 62,829.00. And the final bid was from A1A Sand Blasting of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. The bid bond was for 5% and the bid amount was for $58,100, 58,100.00.
All right. Thank you. Number 3, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing for the rental of four motor graders to support snow removal operations.
Second.
That motion has been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid document, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, any questions about this item? Going a second time. Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
All right. That item carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
All right. That item carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to Public Works Director for review.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
All right. There was only one bid, and it was from Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company of Waterloo, Iowa. The monthly bid was for $6,300, 6,300.00, for a total of $100,800, 100,800.00.
Do we have a bid estimate for that one? Who's that? Sandy, do we have a bid estimate?
I don't exactly have the bid estimate, but I was told by Mark today that the bid came in about...
$85,000.
Yeah. It was quite a bit more than what was...
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. Number 4, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn.
I can do 4 and 5 together. They're both the same thing, except the streets.
Let's do it.
Okay. I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, which is the sale and conveyance of portions of city-owned parcels to the Iowa Department of Transportation for mutual benefit of said entities needed as part of the Highway 63 Improvement Project from Jefferson Street to Franklin Street and Donald Street to Conger Newell Street.
Second.
All right. That motion has been made. Those motions have been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open on the Highway 63 portions of Jefferson to Franklin and Donald to Conger. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on these 2 items? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing and receive and file oral written comments.
Second. That motion has been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of portions of city-owned parcels to the Iowa Department of Transportation for mutual benefit of said entities needed as part of the Highway 63 Improvements Project from Jefferson Street to Franklin Street and Donald Street to Conger Newell Street.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Any questions, counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right. Those items carry. Number 6?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and it is a sale and conveyance of city-owned property of vacant lots south of 512 Reed Street to Larry and Vicki Westendorf in the amount of $3,000 plus cost.
Second.
That motion has been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We now have a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution authoring the sale and conveyance of city-owned property of vacant lots south of 512 Reed Street to Larry and Vicki Westendorf in the amount of $3,000 plus cost.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
Mayor, I need to address counsel. Counsel, as you know, the City of Waterloo leads the state with the 657A laws. But for every plus, there's a minus. As we have cleaned up the neighborhoods and razed all these dilapidated properties, now we are sitting with a large number of vacant lots that we've been unable to sell, we've been unable to give away with a development agreement. And I understand that these lots are costing us in excess of $100,000 a year in mowing and shoveling. So, I've accepted the challenge to find a solution to this problem. I started this spring, as well as this summer, and I have been meeting with anybody that is involved in the housing industry, anywhere from bankers to plumbers. And I have put together a proposal as to how we can solve our problem. I was in hopes to bring this to you before today, but unfortunately, I'm not quite ready yet to do that. The reason I'm bringing this up tonight is that the first 2 houses that we hope to build, one of them on the west side and one on the east side, it just so happens that this is the particular lot to build a house on the east side. So, we do have interest in putting a house on this lot. I would like to table this for 60 days, which allow me a time to finish my proposal and bring it before you, and you can decide then if you wish to sell this lot or build a house on it. Noel Anderson and Rudy have both been involved with this process. If they would wish to comment on it, I'm sure they would, but I'm simply just asking to table for 60 days.
Is that a motion? I'll second it, but that's a motion.
So, to table for 60 days, we do have... They missed the comments, but we do have the Westendors here. Can we at least hear from them, or they don't get an opportunity to say anything?
You close the hearing. It doesn't matter to me.
There's a hearing.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'd just like to address that this issue being that the Westendors aren't going to be able to, but, you know, the Westendors have been in front of the Building and Grounds Committee before with a proposal for this property, and it was less than what our policy for sale of buildable, unbuildable lots is. And this happened a few months back. They live in the property immediately abutting this lot, this vacant lot. Nobody has lived on this vacant lot at 506 Reed Street. But when they were building the grounds, they did not meet the sale of property policy. Since that time, they have decided that they would meet, and their proposal, their request here to buy this, meets the standard for the sale of property. And I respect Councilman Welper and what he is doing and his plan, but immediately across the street, on Reed Street, in that same block, are 2 other properties that are buildable lots, I do believe, that could perfectly suit the same kind of pursuit that Councilman Welper is talking about. The Westendors, in talking with them over some time, want this lot. They're willing to pay the amount that is required of them according to our own sale of lot policy. And they, in turn, plan to take down a tree that is causing some problems there on their own. And they also, at some point in time down the road, have a plan or proposal to put another garage on that lot at some point in time when they can afford it. I know for... I've only been on the council going on 3 years, but during that time, this is one of those big issues, and that is the amount of money that we spend in maintaining properties, and how are we going to get rid of those properties, get them off the tax rules there, and make them so that they are paying taxes? Well, the Westendors are doing that here, Mr. Mayor. And they are just asking for the same kind of courtesy that would be shown to anybody else, especially when they're jumping through the hoops to do this. Also, I think the taxpayers of Waterloo would be very happy with taking this money now rather than waiting for a what-if. And that's why I oppose tabling this, because I believe the Westendors deserve to have an up-or-down vote on this for their own sake, and for the sake of putting this to rest so that they can get started on planning for that lot next to them. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor, could we have Noel maybe address ballpark figure on how many vacant lots we have to choose from and how many homes in process of 657A? I mean, are we talking 20? Are we talking 100? What do we?
Noel Anderson, Committee Planning Development Director. Uh, we believe we have about 131 lots that would technically be buildable lots, and that'll be lots that have the proper dimensions or that they are a lot of record. And again, the reason I bring up both of those, we'll have some lots that may only be 30 feet wide, but they're a lot of record, so technically you could build on them by the zoning ordinance. The question then is the marketability of having someone come along and want to build on a 30-foot wide lot. You know, and I think that is a, that is something that the council's going to have to look at in this decision is, you know, as much as, uh, we're very excited about Councilman Welper's initiative, and we have a potential builder that is interested in moving ahead with the city to look at some of these empty lots. We may have a lot of lots. This is one that they have identified that they believe is buildable and marketable. Because obviously, any program we would want to start and build houses on, we don't want to be able to sell them at the end as well. So that's something that council's going to need to look at. I realize there are, there are two lots across the street. The city does not own either one of those. Um, so just because it's an empty lot there, it could be owned by an adjoining property owner, it could be owned by another entity that does not wish to convey that. So it's, they're not necessarily buildable lots for our program without us having ownership.
And I don't know if this is a fair question for you or maybe for Councilman Welper, but is there something about this particular lot that holds some, uh, you know, more value than maybe some of these other lots would? I mean, I'm not familiar with it, so from a location standpoint, you know, from a development standpoint, could one of you two maybe speak to that?
I didn't choose this particular lot. It was, it was chosen before me. I do know that it was-
We, I can say we supplied the potential builder with, with a list of our lots. This is one that they identified. They liked this location because of the dimensions of the lot. It's a good-sized lot for building on, for different house designs that they're looking at. It's also in close proximity to a school and to one of our major employers in Allen Hospital. So that was some of the things that they remarked upon in terms of liking this location. Plus, the improvements to Highway 63 is making that entire area look better. So that was some of the things that they mentioned upon.
Noel, if you would, would you explain why someone needs to go in there first and build a house, or the second house will never be built?
You know, and Rudy may want to jump in here, too. When we started to do some of the neighborhood stabilization program and the flood program development for infill housing, we had some problems with, you know, you were building these houses in these infill neighborhoods, and there was just no comparables for the appraisers, for the banks. You know, the banks have rules that they have to follow to lend money for people to go in and buy these. Now that we've started to see some success in those programs, and we even noted on the council communication some of the examples of the houses that we built over the former Lincoln School site, in which houses were assessed at approximately 130,000 at the end, and the houses across the street were assessed originally at about 60,000 we started building there. So originally, that looked like it was a little out of whack. Um, but as, again, as we were looking at more and more infill, it started to work, and they started to see the value of these neighborhoods and infill development. You know, I've always preached to you guys that construction brings more construction. If you see one new house there, again, it's going to give a little more credibility to that builder if that one's sold to build a second one there, and it's also going to see improvement in that neighborhood to try and get more houses there.
I will tell you that this is not if these houses are built. I believe it's when these houses are built. I can say that the first two houses that are going to be built, one is looking to be built yet late fall, and the other house will begin August of next year.
Counsel, questions about the motion to table?
So, Mr. Mayor, would it not be appropriate to allow the Westendorfs to speak? I mean, as, I would think, looking at this motion, they had no reason to think they would need to speak until this was brought up.
I somewhat agree with you. But it's counsel's discretion. This is a motion to table. Does counsel want to allow, allow them the opportunity to speak?
I, I would.
I would think they should speak as well.
It's your floor. Oh, we would have reminded you.
Larry Westendorf, 512 Reed Street. The reason I'm looking at this lot is because it's right next to mine, and I'd like to build a garage, and, you know, I've just put 10,000 into my house. And I want to stay in Waterloo. But I just wanted to expand my property and get it expanded. Now, Mr. Welper, you're saying that the neighborhood is not what I would classify as building a $100,000 home on. We only have three property owners on our whole complete block. The rest is all rentals. So, like I said, I'm just looking to expand my property. I want to build a garage in the future. I got to save up some money now because I just put 10,000 in my house, so that's what I'm looking at.
Excuse me, sir. Are you, are you tearing down the garage that you have at your present home?
No, I will not be tearing that one down, but I'll be tearing the shed down that's in the back of it. I've already talked to, uh, Chris Western, and he told me I'd have to remove that one so I could put up another single garage. So that's what I plan on doing.
Sure.
Because my wife is getting tired of parking her truck in the garage kitty corner because my workshop's on the other side of it.
Yeah, I understand. Well, you do also understand that we have interest in someone wishing to build on that lot.
Yeah, but there's other lots. There's a lot on Parker.
We have plenty of lots, sir.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of lots. And a lot across from me, even though the city doesn't own it right now, it's been sitting empty for 32 years. But all of a sudden, it seems like there's interest on 506 Reed Street for some reason, but that's fine.
There's going to be interest all over town, sir. Trust me.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Westendorf. Counsel, any, any other comments?
Mr. Mayor? I, uh, again, I got to repeat that the Westendorfs have done everything. You know, they've, they've been involved with this, trying to get this property for probably a couple of years, quite frankly. And what more do they need to do other than follow the sale of lot policy, which they are doing here? And we're going to delay it on a, and excuse me, Councilman Welper, but it still is a what-if. It's not a when because nothing's happened yet. Uh, with the, with the Westendorfs, it is going to happen, and they just want it to happen tonight. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
I met with them a couple times, too, about it. Uh, Mr. Welper?
If there is no hurry, they're not going to be building any garage on it for some time, he said. I'm only asking for 60 days to at least look at my proposal, and you can decide then.
All right. Any other questions? We have a motion to table this for 60 days to take a look at a proposal by Mr. Welper within that timeframe. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion to table for 60 days. Sorry for the inconvenience. Counsel would like to see 60 more days, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I might add, could we, uh, figure that up right now so we have an exact date when we're going to have this brought up again, so there's no delay? So it doesn't become an indefinite tabling, which sometimes occurs? This should not occur to the Westendorfs if we're-
It'll be November 28th would be the next meeting after 60 days.
So that will, that will be a bookmark for November 28th to have this brought back to the council for the Westendorfs.
Okay.
And there should be no change in monetary numbers or anything like that. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is what we have coming back, and this will be up or down at that time. All right, 60 days. Uh, could someone take seven, eight, and nine, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt following resolutions. Number seven is a resolution approving amendment agreement with AFLAC for Employee Benefit Services at no additional cost to the city of Waterloo. Number eight is a resolution approving the annual financial report for City Streets for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2016, and authorized, authorized and transmitted to the Iowa Department of Transportation. Number nine is a resolution approving the fiscal year 2016 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, which is a caper for C, D, B, G, and Home Program activities for the period July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016 to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second. All right, those motions have been made. A resolution has been made with the second. Any questions, counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right, those items carry. 10 through 12, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Item 10 is adopting a resolution approving Ward of Contract to Lodge Construction, Inc. of Clarksville, Iowa in the amount of $66,155.27 and approving the bonds and certificate of insurance for the fiscal year 2017, Sergeant Road Trail Bridge Number One Replacement, Contract Number 917, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. 11 is adopting a resolution approving professional services agreement with AECom Technical Services, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $27,700 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2017 Bridge Repairs, Sixth Street, 18th Street, and Ainsborough Avenue, Contract Number 916, and authorize mayor to execute said document. And number 12 is adopting a resolution approving notice of intent for NPDES coverage under general permit to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for fiscal year 2017 Sergeant Road Trail Bridge Number One Replacement, Contract Number 917, and authorize mayor to execute said documents.
Second. Uh, motion's been made with the second. Um, I do have a question on number 11, Eric. Uh, with regards to the $27,004 repairs, if we find out, with, with what AECom does, and we find out that there's further damage that have happened over the course of this past week, are we still able to include this, or are these structural changes on top? Or could the flood have had any type of impact?
Eric Thorstens here. I don't believe the flood will have any impact. These are all things that are up on the surface of the bridge. For instance, our problem over on the Sixth Street bridge here, that's the one we're really anxious to get going on, get that plate off the street before winter, so.
All right.
We'll certainly look at that. I don't think there's much change because of the flood.
Okay, thank you. Uh, counsel, any questions on these items? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, those items carry. Could someone take 13 and 14, please?
Mr. Bear?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving Amendment Number Two to the Professional Services Agreement with HR Green Incorporated for additional services related to the Phase One environmental site assessment for the former Wonder Bread facility, 301 to 305 and 325 Commercial Street, increasing the lump sum amount of the contract by $15,400. Number 14 is a resolution to approve the Second Amendment to development agreement with Three Little Lambs LLC to authorize a one-year extension to allow for the completion of the project and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute all necessary documents.
Second. All right, that motion's been made with the second. Noel, can you tell us about 13, please?
Number 13 is the former Wonder Bread facility. Obviously, we've been working with SingleSpeed to get that project going. You know, going back to when this project started, we had done some Phase One and Phase Two testing. Working downtown is always, is always a joy in terms of when you're digging and finding things. Unfortunately, we found some more contaminated soils as a part of that project that are out into the, the city right-of-way parts of it. Um, so this is the necessary steps that we need to, to monitor, test, make sure it's done correctly, and follow up with paperwork as to how to dispose of it. I believe they are going to take the disposal soils at the local landfill now. Uh, before, we were going to have to try to ship them somewhere else, but I think they're going to take them here now. We're, just have to package them a certain way to dispose of them. But this is necessary environmental work to continue the project.
All right, thank you. Any questions on 13 and 14, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On 13, so this is for stuff that's off the Wonder Bread site. It's really our responsibility.
Correct. It's kind of northwest of the building in the Cedar Street part when they were excavating out there in the right-of-way to do some foundation work and things like that. It was, contaminated soils were in there.
When we conveyed that, did we have a clause that made sure we weren't responsible for anything that was on-site? I realize off-site, we're responsible.
I think we conveyed, I believe it was very, it was our normal environmental wording. We should say we're conveying it with our best knowledge of what we've done for testing is that there's no environmental conditions, and now we found some.
Okay, so this is in the road, in other words?
Correct.
Out the street. Thanks.
All right, thank you for your questions. Any other questions about 13 and 14? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, those two items carry. Could someone take 15, uh, 15 and 16? Yes, sir.
15 is a resolution approving an agreement with Buckstrom for a three-year retail recruitment and retention program with an annual fee of $50,000. 16 is a resolution approving a development agreement with Deer Creek for infrastructure reimbursement for Deer Creek development area near a former Greyhound Park site estimated at 1.8 million, and authorize mayor and city clerk to sign and fully execute all necessary documents.
Second. All right, those items have been made with the second. Questions, sir?
David Dryer, 3145 West Fourth Street. I guess the question is, why are we spending $50,000 per year from TIF when we cannot take money from TIF for tax relief? Three-year contract to fill vacant spots in Waterloo when we created a new position, from what I understand, at the Planning and Zoning for an Economic Development Director position? If we use an outside source, why do we need this slot? Also, why did we sign an agreement, which was in the paper, with Ben Stroh that notes Buckstrom? Basically, he's directing us to have to go to this person? I can't see that we need somebody from out of state to do something we hired somebody to do here. That doesn't make any sense to me. Also, on 16, my understanding, if I had a piece of property and I was going to develop it, I didn't put in a sewer, water, curb, street, et cetera, but yet Deer Creek is the developer. Do we own that land, or do they? If they own it, then why aren't they developing it? And then they turn it over to the city for maintenance later on. If we own it, then I agree with the 1.8 million dollars. But I can't agree with, they do, they do the 1.8 million dollar development, and we pay them back. Uh, they're the developer, and they get their money back from the sale of the lot. Or do we own the property?
All right, let's start with the first one. And actually, Noel, you'll be for both of these, but just real quickly on number 15. Number 15 is a tool that we have to take a different approach to the way that we're trying to fill empty storefronts, the way that we're trying to bring businesses in. So that is our approach to trying to be more aggressive. We just had a presentation, I believe within the last week or two, from Buckstrom that talked about, what was it, 25% or, or a high number of all retail development across this country? They actually have a hand to play in it. Yes, we did restructure a position that only focuses on, you know, our small business, making sure that we improve the climate, making sure we do just what you said with regards to finding businesses to go in there with little disruption to our general fund when we did that. But Buckstrom is a tool and its approach, a more aggressive approach than we've had in the past to making sure we're doing everything that we can to attract and recruit businesses locally. Noel, you want to speak to this?
I think it's a very good analysis, Mayor. I mean, yeah, this is obviously, this is information we could not put together as staff. This is information that they compile as a, as a research center. Um, and in their proposal, of course, at the work session, they went into exactly the amount of, of clients that they deal with and the percentage of nationwide retail activity last year and what they're involved with. You know, they have 3,500-plus total clients, 700-plus public sector clients, 35 million square feet of retail, 500-plus community of years of retail management and economic development experience. This is a wonderful tool for us to try and engage and proactively go after new businesses of all types, retail being one of the forefront types of activities that they work on, but also medical, commercial, office-based-
And Noel, could you also, with regards to sixteen, answer the Deer Creek questions?
Back in 2007, the Waterloo Greyhound Park Site was sitting there as a vacant parcel of land that was being used for agricultural purposes. It's 100 acres in size. Deer Creek Development approached the city, having seen absolutely no activity in that area. The city of Waterloo and Deer Creek came into a development agreement to where they would put in the infrastructure within a 10-year period. You may recall, at one of the last council sessions, we extended that by one year because of some new tenants we're looking at out there that could change exactly how the last parts of infrastructure go in. But basically, over the years, Deer Creek has fronted the money to make that a development area from ag land, whereas the city has not had to, and then we repay them back with the TIF. In terms of the standards of normal developers, they do sell the land at a lesser cost than other developers sell the land for, to make it a fair deal for both them and for the city of Waterloo. And we think it's been a great partnership that has brought millions of dollars to that area, over 16 million in new taxable value to the area and nine business expansions, relocations, and investments. This 1.8 million would be the last amount to go in there to finish out the park. We have several new projects with the Loves Travel Stop, getting ready to go there, Hawkeye Stages and Goobles Heating and Air Conditioning are under construction right now as you drive by there, and we have several other businesses looking at the area. We think this is a very appropriate step. The reason we're doing this is a separate agreement and sitting down with Michelle Whidner and looking at the funds that the TIF is generating now in this last step, because we pay interest upon the other investment that they're putting out there, we felt that it was appropriate with the TIF funds to properly use them to pay off this last part as a separate part to get that so it's not continuing debt against the TIF district so we can help more businesses go there and hopefully eventually release some funds from that TIF to help the rest of the city when it's fully built out.
Thank you.
I guess the only thing I hear that helps me have a little bit of peace of mind is that hopefully if we can finally release some TIF money to help me as a taxpayer. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jacobs.
Just a couple of questions back to item fifteen, Buxton. So Noel, what is Buxton really going to provide us? Just information? Or are they going to actually give us something else to assist us?
We have a representative from Buxton here. I'll let him, he obviously explained it a lot better than I.
Mayor, counsel, thank you for having me. So the question on what we're going to provide.
State your name and address.
Matthew Tate, 732 Rio Bravo Drive, Haslett, Texas. I'm the senior account executive for Buxton, working with public sectors much like Waterloo all across the country. What we provide is a proactive approach to retail. So instead of wondering, hey, we need a grocery store, which grocery store should we go after? Noel might say, we'd love a Trader Joe's here. We might like this specific brand of retail. Based on our expertise, our proprietary methodology, we're going to jump in, look at the types of people living here, and look at the other items going on in the trade area, and say, this grocer is actually a better fit for you to recruit on the grocery front. So it's really a, one big piece of it is a targeted retail recruitment plan, but we're also going to partner with Noel and team to put a good plan together to strategize and to get beyond any kind of gatekeeper responses from retailers.
So we're looking at primarily retail-type jobs?
Jobs, yes. So it's more recruiting the actual retailer. We do have some healthcare reports available as well to help maybe hospitals or urgent care. We call them dock-in-the-boxes, help them staff properly. You don't just want to plop a hotel or a hospital down and say, let's just staff it, let's just take a guess at how we staff it. Let's actually use data and numbers to say, you know, there's actually a high need for pediatrics in this area, or maybe oncology, something like that.
Is there an effort to reach out and select or recommend the retailers that would pay a higher livable wage for our citizens?
Is there an effort to target higher-paying jobs?
Through your analysis, and is there a way that you have to bring us retail jobs, I guess, in this case, but job that would pay more for the folks?
Well, that could potentially come through the partnership. What we're doing is we're looking at, for example, the city limits are right around 69,000 individuals. What we're doing is saying, look, a retailer is going to look much beyond the city limits. A retailer does not care about city boundaries, city limits. They want to look at more of a sustainable customer base. So when you go out 20 minutes around Waterloo, you're looking at more like 120,000 people. We want to tell this story to retailers. Now, when we do our methodology and you see which retailers are a strong fit, there's a little bit of kind of give and take from Noel and his team and saying, okay, these are the types of maybe restaurants we want to focus on, or maybe this type of retail, because this could bring in higher-paying jobs. But what we're doing is we're looking at what's on the ground today and where are retailers that have sites on the ground today that look just like the trade area of Waterloo.
So one final question, if I may. What areas are you targeting? Are you targeting downtown Waterloo as well or not?
Yeah, great question. So the first approach we take, we actually get Noel and the team, whoever ends up being that point of contact for us, but we pick four to five areas of development and we say, okay, what are the unique characteristics about this? So it could be distance to interstate. It could be very residential, a lot of rooftops. We'll look at each one of them, but essentially, we're going to look at the types of people psychographically around each one of those locations. So how people live their lives and spend their money. The best example, there's Target customers out there and there's Walmart or Kmart customers out there, right? You could put a Target on top of Walmart customers or Kmart customers. It might not do so well. So we want to look to make sure the types of people match the type of retail that we're going to recommend.
So to dive into Councilman Jacobs' question a little bit deeper, you work with Noel and the Economic Development Office to target specific areas that we're interested in. For instance, if we take a look at Crossroads, if we take a look at downtown, if we take a look at the Logan Plaza area, we decide what our priorities are, and then you work with us in those areas to make sure we connect to different retail outlets, different types of businesses, to help in those particular areas, to bring them in. So we tell you where we want to prioritize, right?
Yeah, you tell us, here's the different areas of development we have. We'll tell you how unique each one of those areas are, and then we'll say, okay, let's move forward with this one for year one, and let's find some matches, some retailers that match this trader.
And I think there was a little bit of miscommunication. So excellent question with regards to where we're targeting, that those weren't the final places. Those were just examples of where we see this tool can become a benefit, can become a benefit to helping us move those areas forward. Mr. Lynn.
Mr. Mayor, so you may be answering my question. Everybody saw the email from JSA, David Deeds. He was concerned about not being left out of the, so what you're saying is he still, he still can get in on the game with this.
Yeah, we're just now getting that direction, but they're not ruled out.
Okay, I think that's what got everybody excited because the proposal kind of talked about Logan Plaza and Crossroads.
Right.
So everybody else went, well, wait a minute.
And again, this was, we were looking at, we originally started talking to Buxton. We're looking at how to fund this as well. We want to use TIF funds, again, because it's economic development activities, utilizing the newly created Logan Plaza Midport TIF District for funding, utilizing the Crossroads area. And again, those are two of our stronger retail areas that we want to promote. Obviously, you know, if we had a project that was looking at the downtown area, now that we would have Buxton in as a partner and already putting together data, if that new company, whether it was retail or a professional office user, was looking for data, we can work with Buxton to kind of work towards what information we would need to provide to that company to try to draw and attract them here citywide.
Noel, I'm sorry, but there's a targeted approach, if I'm not mistaken.
Absolutely.
You know, I think there's targeted, and that's what Councilman Lynn is talking about, making sure that we identify some of those very areas and we target these efforts to making sure that we connect those empty storefronts, those opportunities with particular businesses. So we're going to be targeted in that approach, and I think that's the question that we're talking about, where. But we're still working with that. JSA is, or let's move away from JSA, but the downtown area has always been a priority. If you take a look at our strategic plans, they're still a priority. So we're going to take a look at those efforts. We're going to make sure that we target specific areas, whether it's the heart of the city or the outskirts, to make sure we give them the full effect of making sure they see progress. Mr. Lynn, you have another question?
And I have a question on number sixteen, too. Noel, in your professional opinion, is this, this is a tool, as the mayor said, is it a want or a need? If we had this tool, would we do much better economic development? Would we see a real result?
By approving this?
By hiring these guys to help us out, are we going to move forward and get?
I'm sorry, I thought you went to sixteen.
Trader Joe's or whatever, you know what I'm saying? Are we going to see something, come to town with their help?
I definitely do. Again, going back to the work session that they held, and you can see the percentage, the number of retail operations started last year and the percentage that they had a hand in. Plus, if you think about it, now all of a sudden, we have the information that retailers are looking for. You know, you can try to be proactive and call up Chili's Restaurant and you probably won't get a response back, or if you do, you might get a generic response saying, hey, we need 1.5 acres and this much traffic by and all this. And again, you're probably thrown in a pile with all the other 50 communities that are contacting them with the same want of having that restaurant or whoever it is. With Buxton, we're getting the specifics of, and they went through in their presentation, it looks like the same person, but this one, they specifically can show likes of Chili's versus a TGI Fridays or something. So we're showing these companies where their customers are. Plus, not only are we going to have that information, Buxton is hired by these companies to go and find sites. Now, all of a sudden, they've already got our information put together to show to all these companies that Waterloo, Iowa is a site that would work for their needs. So we think that's kind of a double-edged benefit for us to have the information ourselves, have them working for us and partnering with us, again, when we get a specific one as well.
Can I add to that point? One, I think taking a look at those businesses and where they locate, they don't necessarily want to get in business to fail.
Absolutely.
So you're connecting them with the appropriate areas and appropriate demographics that have helped them to be successful throughout this country and around the world with the different places you work at. Number two, when we take a look, and it goes to the questions we've been asking, number one, I mean, for one year, we need them to come back, make a presentation. Contractually, what do we have? So if we say one year goes by, nothing happens, what can we do? Two years go by, nothing happens. What safeguards does the council have and the mayor's office have that this is a successful partnership?
I mean, we'll kind of have to look at that as we're moving ahead. I mean, we're definitely in it for a three-year contract. I think they said they had a 91%
Correct.
Redo rate, retention rate. So obviously, a lot of other communities have been very happy with them. You know, for 50,000 a year, if we had one new restaurant built a year because of this, that would pretty much pay for that in taxes, very close to what a new restaurant is valued at these days. So again, we feel very confident that this is a very good risk for the amount of benefit that we see coming back.
And then lastly, could you just tell us in about a minute, the footprint that you've had with retail across the entire country for the folks that didn't see the presentation when you did it the first time?
Sure, yeah. So we work with, currently, we have about 350 to 400 active retail clients. With these clients, we are working at the CEO, Director of Real Estate level. They're giving us as much data on all of their customers, all of their stores, so that we can find out where, essentially, who, where value, who is their customer that's already coming into their stores or restaurants, their hotels? Where are more of those customers found, whether that's in the city they're currently in, or where are those found across the country? And then most importantly, what is the value to those customers around each location?
So when you mentioned earlier, 25% of retail establishment, some of those highlights, those big numbers that folks are interested in.
So Buxton clients use a, what we call Scout. You guys will have Scout as well, the city of Waterloo. This is our mapping platform. Our retailers jump into Scout, click anywhere on the map to say, what type of revenue would I do right here in Waterloo? Through that, 85,000 sites were scored in our program last year by our retailers, and about 15,000 sites were opened. So a pretty good percentage, but what really that tells you is a retailer is looking at about 10 to 15 sites in order to open one per year. So what this program is really made for is getting you on that list of decision-making, gets you to that real estate council, so that Waterloo is one of the 15 they're looking at to decide whether they want to open that one or not.
So how many businesses have you placed in communities? You're not the marketing person, are you?
No, I'm the account executive that has it all on the back end.
Right, right. Folks want to know if, you know, Grinnell, Iowa, you helped to bring in 25. Across the country, 300 places you work with, you know, how many businesses have you brought to communities?
Yeah, I think the best way to say it is this, retail is not an event, it's a process. And so what I've seen in my four years at Buxton is about 18 to 24 months is what it takes a retailer to make a decision on whether they're going to move forward or not. So I can tell you from year one, we're going to get in some really good conversations and hopefully start to win, start to get those retailers serious about Waterloo. But I don't have an exact number on how many retailers I've placed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir.
I've got just a couple of questions. First, just to, I guess, clear the air, and I unfortunately didn't bring the Courier article along with me, but didn't it say in the Courier article that this was part of the requirement of the agreement with Logan Plaza with Ben Stroh, or did I misread that?
I apologize, Tim. I didn't read the Courier article yet. But no, there is nothing in the Logan Agreement that would bind us to this.
And if that was quoted, that's wrong.
I don't know if anybody was quoted, but I mean.
If he printed it, that's wrong.
There was something in the Sunday Courier about it, and it specifically talked about this, which caught my eye. And I think, you know, everybody up here in the council wants to do everything we can to continue economic development, I think, but there's also that question of, you know, we're already paying the Alliance, we're paying Vanderwall, we hired another staff person. So we want to do everything we can do, but there's limits to everything. So I think that's the reason, maybe there's good questions or hesitations about this. Who's going to monitor the success of this? Is that going to be your job or is that going to be Buxton's job?
Ultimately, it'll be my job for the city of Waterloo.
Okay, so we're going to get like a one-year review of that, like we do all of our other economic development projects and partners, or?
You will probably get more regular than one year, but they'll probably come back and present at least one year. But we'll be doing, obviously, our normal staff to council updates on what's happening and if we're getting specific. It's because of Buxton, we'll be letting you know of that as well, so you can see the value of the contract.
Right, so you're going to be able to identify the little magazine you put together, what specifically came through Buxton?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. And then finally, I guess, so did I understand correctly that Buxton basically gets paid by the businesses and by the governments, both? So you're kind of getting paid by the buyer and the seller, the seeker and the finder?
Yeah, so we work on the retail side of our business. We also have a public sector side of our business. They do not mesh and overlap at all, except for the fact we have contacts on the retail side of our business. So it's not that we're listing a property for you guys and then calling one of our active retail clients and saying, hey, we've got a good site for you. Our matching methodology has no, there's no weight whether they're a Buxton client or not, and Noel will see that when we partner together. But there's absolutely no bearing on whether they are a Buxton client or not. So it's not like we're paying, we're receiving money on both sides of it. It's just completely two separate arms of our business.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lynn, we'll come right back to you, Mr. Morrissey.
Yes, Noel, I was wondering, when should we, maybe this has already been answered, but I'm just not catching it. When should we see results?
Very soon, hopefully. I forget, there's a thing in here that talks about when we'll actually get our first set of data.
Yeah, about 45 days from the contract signing, we'll deliver the final pursuit packages of all retailers. That's in an iPad that we deliver to you guys and all of our pursuit materials that we put together. Along the way, about 10 days after the signature comes in, that's when we have our first milestone review. That'll be a go-to meeting that we set up and we share with Noel, here's the different areas of development you asked us to do. pursuit packages of all retailers. That's in an iPad that we deliver to you guys and all of our pursuit materials that we put together. Along the way, about 10 days after the signature comes in, that's when we have our first milestone review. That'll be a go-to meeting that we set up and we, we share with Noel, here's, here's the different areas of development you asked us to look into, and here's what we're seeing. Beyond that, about 20 days, that's where we identify, based on the types of people living here and the other retail market conditions here on the ground, here are the best retailers for, for you to be pursuing. It's, then, we get approval and thumbs up to move forward with those, generate the pursuit packages. Following that, and this, this kind of goes to your question as well, as part of our support plan, we come out about three to four months after, after, when you guys allow us to get on the schedule as well, present, here's, here's the plan, here's what the implementation strategy looks like, here's what we've done up to this point, here's where we're having successes, here's what the retailers are telling us, here's where we had to kind of go back to the drawing board on some of that. But it's a constant strategy and, and working with Noel. My team's support plan is to reach out to all of my clients once per week. So, whether that's email or, or phone call, 100% of the time, we're, we're working with them. And that's just, that's just the bare minimum. So, so that's a little insight there.
So, with the downtown Waterloo, that Noel is not taking fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh place. I mean, we have had, you know, conversations even in, on the council today about empty storefronts in downtown Waterloo. To me, that would seem to be one of the main priorities that Buxton should have and that the city should have. Not that I'm in any way putting Logan Avenue Plaza or Crossroads there, but I would hope, I would hope that, that downtown Waterloo, which is also part of its, my word, Mr. Mayor, is right up there and is not going to be forgotten or put on the back burner, Noel.
Definitely not. You know, I guess in my, my personal opinion, you know, downtown Waterloo doesn't have as many typical sites for a typical retail developer. So, again, it takes a little bit more of a unique retail-type company or even a company to want to go into a downtown area. As we start to identify companies that are interested in the demographics of Waterloo and what we have to offer, obviously, we'll be exploring with them different options, including downtown Waterloo.
And the Buxton representative, Buxton would have the capabilities to go out and recruit retail for our downtown storefronts that are empty now.
Absolutely, yeah. So, that's, that's one thing that we can do, and through our Scout program, that I'll be training Noel and whoever else ends up, a Scout user on the ability to jump in and say, what does our downtown look like? What do similar downtowns look like and what retail do they have? Maybe we want to go to another downtown that has a great restaurant that we love down here as well. We can, we can run some similarities and comparisons to find out, hey, how can we start to coach these people to come over here? So, absolutely, that's part of something we'll take into consideration.
And my last question is, in any contract, if it's not living up to its, its worth, why in this one, isn't there any early out if--
There is.
There is.
Waterloo, if Waterloo, Iowa cancels services prior to the, well, here it is. Waterloo, Iowa may cancel services for the following year by providing written notice to Buxton at least 60 days in advance of a yearly renewal.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Didn't, didn't you a little bit earlier say it's about an 18-month process? Isn't that what I heard you say?
So, retail recruitment's about an 18, 21, 24-month process. Now, that depends on the specific retailer. Some, some city inventory sometimes can come into play, whether you have franchisees or not, all these different things that we're going to learn as we start to talk to these retailers. But for a retailer, a retailer could be interested in today, but we've seen to where it could still take 18 to 24 months before the ribbon cutting and you're enjoying their restaurant.
Sir, have you toured downtown Waterloo?
Yeah, I actually, I did. I came in a little bit early, drove around and--
Today?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Are you confident that you could bring in some retail for us?
Absolutely. I'm confident that we could match you to retail that looks like a good fit for you. Now, where, where it really gets to where my confidence sways is, is how strong of a team I have on, on the city side. So, I can work with anyone and coach them up on a game plan and strategize on, on what we're going to do. But if I've got the wrong, wrong staff, it's going to be a challenge, but--
We have a strong team over here.
Right, absolutely.
No laughing?
So, it's, so it's up to us to close the deal. Yeah, that is. We need to talk about that.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Lynn?
So, I had a question on 16, but now I have a quick question on 15. So, who recruits the business? Trader Joe's decides they're going to come. Who recruited them, you or them?
So, we will, we will identify, these are the best retailers for you to go after. We will also say, if Trader Joe's was a specific want, we have the data to say, yes, you can get them, or no, you can't, because of X, Y, Z reason, X, Y, Z reason, X, Y, Z reason. So, that's, that's also a great point for learning. Also, what will it take to us to grow to get to that level? Or maybe you're already there. But, but we will identify them as the last piece of our, of our deliverable, which is about 45 days in, we give you a verified contact at each one of those retailers that allows Noel to say, to pick up the phone or email and reach out to them to start setting those meetings.
But the ultimate responsibility is--
But if he gets a meeting scheduled, I jump on the phone with him to talk about data, talk about why we match them, and Noel sells the city.
Okay. And so, on number 16, this is the first time I heard that explanation about Deer Creek. So, across the street, Young put in a business park, and he, he put all the infrastructure in, and he sells the lots at retail. Over here, we're helping Deer, we're kind of, we're paying for the infrastructure ourselves, kind of through them. But to get our money out of it, he sells a little below market value, those lots.
That is correct.
Is that what you told me?
They're selling lower than what the Young ones would sell or what they would sell up at the northeast corner of Ridgeway and 63.
Okay, thank you.
We ready for a vote?
I would just make a comment that I think Buxton proposal is a cost worth bearing. I think it's, if we want to grow our community to, back to 85,000, we have to be able to revenue generate and bring in businesses in order to do that and reduce costs to the taxpayer.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call vote on 15 and 16.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
All right, those items carry. Number 17, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt, and then Morrissey can take 18.
Item 17 is a motion received, filed, considered, and passed for the third time and adopted ordinance, admitting the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa by repealing Title IX, Chapter Two, Section Two, Codes Adopted, Subsection A, and enacting in lieu thereof a new Title IX, Chapter Two, Section Two, Codes Adopted, Subsection A, and repealing Title IX, Chapter Two, Section Eight Amendments, and enacting in lieu thereof a new Title IX, Chapter Two, Section Eight Amendments, and that is for the Fire Code Ordinance Amendment.
Second. All right, that motion has been made with the second, three readings. Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
All right, that item carries. Number 18, Mr. Morrissey.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion received, filed, considered, and passed for the third time and adopted an ordinance admitting the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa by repealing Chapter One Building Code in Article A, Building Contractors of Chapter One Building Code of Title Nine, Building Regulations in their entirety, and enacting in lieu thereof new Chapter One Building Code in Article A, Building Contractors of Chapter One Building Code of Title Nine, Building Regulations on the Building Code Ordinance Amendment.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. This is the third reading of this item. Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take 19 through 21?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper?
Number 19 is a motion to accept and place on file the arbitrage test results reflecting that no payment is due to the Internal Revenue Service for the sewer revenue bond series 2011A issued in July of 2011. Items 20 and 21 are the same thing. Motion to approve change order number two for an increase in the amount of $2,850 to lodge construction of Parksville, Iowa in conjunction with the Sherwood Recreation Area Phase II Improvement. And number 21 is the same with a change order increase of $4,400.
Second. All right, those motions have been made with the second. Any questions about these items? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Voice vote.
Voice vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Those items carry. All right, we have oral presentations at this time. We have two people for this meeting. We have Ms. Lori Dell, who asked last week to come this week. That's probably the longest gap in time that we've had for someone asked to speak at oral presentations. So, we thank you for, for your patience last week. It is your stage.
Lori Dell, 1228 Independence Avenue. I'm responding to last week. There was reference to the youth at the cattle congress and them being arrested and them, you know, being painted in a bad light. Of course, they should be held accountable for those, those actions, but I want us to think about ourselves and why these youth are in the position that they're in today. I feel like we've written our youth off in many ways. They're not getting proper guidance from home. They're also not getting the proper guidance in school, and we, as the community, has also failed them. So, to, what I'm asking for us to do as a community is to start thinking about how we can help our youth become better citizens, guide them, direct them. One thing that I do appreciate from our mayor, he has started a summer job initiative with the Jesse Cosby Center, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, and promised jobs, promised jobs or--
I don't know how that works.
Okay, and I think that's the ongoing thing, and I think that's a, a step in the right direction. So, I would like to challenge us to continue that. We used to have the Gates Basketball League and some other things, and many people are talking about our youth in a negative light, but I don't see too many things taking place to help them. They cannot learn on their own. They're the youth. They're naive. They don't know. And so, we have to take that initiative. Okay, I'm not going to beat that with a dead horse. I also want to talk about the mayor and our chief here. I hope that we, as a community, get behind both of them and support them in the efforts that they are about to embark on. And we should be thinking about ways to help them succeed and not pit them against each other or fight either one of them. We should really be in support of them, and of course, hold them accountable when, when it is necessary, when things are not to, to our, what we feel is our standard. Also, well, just plain and simple, thank you so much, Mayor Hart, for all the hard work you have been doing. You know, I've never helped campaign, I don't know if I'm supposed to say that, but anyone before, and, you know, I, I supported you, and I am very appreciative for the hard work that you have put in so far. I will continue to help you in any shape, form, or fashion that I may, I can, and I have your back too, sir. And I want to help you achieve in any way that I can. So, Waterloo, let's, let's do this. Let's really make Waterloo the beautiful city that it can be. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dell. I would like to ask Mr. Jim Chapman if you would please come forward.
Outback. Anyway, Jim Chapman, 224 Birch, I got a comment on last week's meeting, too, Mayor. I wish all those people were here, that were here last week to help support Waterloo. I got home, I watched the news, and I didn't see one person get up there that was positive, that was talking on the news. And there was one comment that really stuck in my craw, and I think you should address that right at the moment, Mayor, is that we are here to hang another black man, which is the farthest from the truth that could ever be. And that stuck in my craw and is still sticking in my craw. Where are those people tonight to help us move Waterloo forward? They aren't here, you know? And every week, we're here. And I talked to the, my cronies in the back row back there, and they agree with me. That is not the purpose we were here for, and that's not the purpose we are here for every week. I was not a supporter of yours when you first ran, Mayor, but you keep going, maybe you'll win me over. Thank you.
All right. I will definitely make sure if I do decide to run, I'll send that campaign notice for a check out, too. I'm just playing. All right, Mr. Dillivu.
Forest Dillivu, 1725 Huntington Road. Just like to make one comment about the property that you did not allow to be sold tonight. You know, that would have been $3,000 in the hand, it would have been taxes starting as soon as the paperwork was done. Over a year ago, probably 18 months ago, there was a house on Third Street, someone had wanted to tear down, House of Hope, wanted to buy that and put a new building up there. It's 18 months later, the house still sits there. It doesn't look good, it's not doing us any good. We've got 18 months more of maintenance, whatever we do, mow the grass, shovel the snow, and now we're trying to work a deal to give it to someone for nothing. You know, we could have had a nice building there, we passed it up. This could be the same thing here, although I've talked to the Westendors once, and I know that they probably won't quit, but they could quit. We had a building out on 63, just off of 63, a historical house, that one of the council people thought we should have that house and give it to someone. We bought that thing probably 10 years ago. It's still sitting there, we're still mowing the grass, we're still doing whatever needs to be done. Sometimes, we need to say, let's do it, let's get it done. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dillivu. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council before we go to executive session?
Good evening, Mayor Hart and City Council members. Hello, my name is Jonathan Soffa, I live at 318 West Third Street. We come to you tonight with an innovative new proposal. We recognize that Waterloo is blessed with many young professionals whom live and work downtown. Downtown Waterloo is home to a mixed population of residents, all who desperately need a local source for groceries and other basic amenities. We acknowledge that the Riverloo Public Markets lease ends September 30, 2016. A need for a market which will serve the downtown Waterloo community and surrounding neighborhoods is a must for the progression of the downtown area. This group, of which eight are here tonight, is asking for an open dialogue with you regarding the future plan for this space. We know you understand how important developing this space is, to attract more residents to Waterloo, as well as furthering economic growth. We welcome and thank you for the opportunity to share our vision with you. Please contact myself, Jonathan Soffa, to begin this dialogue. My phone number, 715-309-9270. My email, john, J-O-N, at soffa, S-O-F-F-A, dot com, or contact@sofa.com. Thank you.
All right, Jonathan, we will have one of our staff members get with you within the next couple of days. The flood recovery efforts have kind of taken over, but we will have someone get in contact with you within the next few days.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Renata Sack, I live at 414 Sunset Road in Waterloo since many, many years. I'm part of John Soffa's group, and we're part of the whole, and we're coming to you as citizens who wish the city to be a desirable and visionary community, highly competitive for businesses to locate in. At present, Waterloo is remodeling and building lots of new apartments and condominiums. The Grand Crossing condos alone will provide 68 units. The Grand Crossing condos alone will provide sixty-eight units. To increase, the increase of people living downtown is calling for an accessible, affordable, and healthy grocery source, at best locally produced, fresh, and wholesome. At present, this does not exist. The public market space is a well-placed location for individuals to reach, even folks who live on the other side of the river and in the Church Row neighborhood, and folks living in the remodeled President Hotel. Please help us make positive changes in the expo place space. Let us make it an interesting, beautiful, and livable community. We already have many attributes of quality in this area of Waterloo, the art center, the sports complex, single speed, basil pizzeria, bicycle shops, the Cedar River, and more. We pledge commitment and assistance in shaping with foresight and innovation, and ask you to make this issue part of your developments of Waterloo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm a little nervous here. Um, good evening, my name is Esther Moyer-Volcheff, I live at two-one-seven West Fourth Street. Um, first off, I just want to say thank you for allowing for this time. Um, I'm also with this lovely group of citizens here regarding the public market space. Uh, Mayor and City Council members, you sit right now at a very exciting and important seat here in downtown Waterloo's history, and before you, you can see that we are here because we understand and embrace the idea of wanting a positive and beneficial changes as well to our beloved downtown area. We are downtown Waterloo. We walk its bridges, we bike its paths, we support its local businesses, and we volunteer in its activities. I speak for my husband, as well as myself, um, to say that we choose downtown Waterloo. We would not move out of it just because it's not perfect. No, instead, we've made a choice to try to be a part of the positive momentum that is happening today, the same way that it is your choice to try to make an, excuse me, to try and listen to what we, as active, hopeful community members, have to say, and the valuable feedback that we have to give in order to suit the needs of those who want to build the downtown Waterloo area with you. Living just a few blocks from the public market, one would think that grocery needs are met. With its short distance to my home, running out of ingredients for baking, or even last-minute dinner decisions should be no problem, but this isn't the case, and it's not my experience. From having to deal with odd hours of operation to not having the choices that I need, healthy choices, I find myself getting into my car and driving to other grocery stores, as well as big-box stores. None of these are down, in downtown Waterloo. There is no reason that this should occur. I know with discussions with other downtown Waterloo residents, as well as those who work or pass through downtown Waterloo, this public market location is a prime location, and it is a destination. Now with the expiring lease, we have an exciting opportunity at our feet, at your feet, and we see this as Waterloo citizens. Um, please understand that we come to you as this is not a want, this is a need. Uh, thank you for your time, and we look forward to working with you, um, together to build this.
All right, thank you. Someone? All right, um, who should, um, I, I mentioned Jonathan earlier, um, who should be the main contact? I'll have, uh, if you can get your information to Paul Hudding, um, after this meeting is over, uh, then we'll, we'll follow up, so, thank you. All right. All right, um, you...
You said, um...
Oh, okay, come on, come on, I'm sorry.
David Dreyer, thirty-one, forty-five West Fourth Street. Uh, I had the occasion to go to the, uh, new yard waste recycling site, uh, out on Independence Avenue, and, uh, found I could not dispose of a branch that came down off a big tree, uh, because it was over two inches in diameter. Site is nice, nice gravel, I, I like the site, but, um, I asked the guy out there, I said, well, where do I take this? Can I take it down to the Falls Avenue site where the big logs go? He said, no, if you take it down there, you're in violation, you'll be cited for that violation. I said, okay, what do I do with it? He said, well, you can take it out to the, to the dump. I said, well, I'm going to pay for it out there, aren't I? He said, oh, yeah. What we had down by the sewer plant, we could get rid of anything, people that had a tree come down, or, or sawed a tree down, could take their stump down there, et cetera, and many times I was down there, there was a big pile of stumps, next time I was down there, they were all gone, because people were down there loading them up on their trailers and getting them out of there. So we have a discrepancy here, or a problem here, I think, with now what do people do with those big trees, stumps, big logs, or big sections of log? That they can't take it down on the end of Falls Avenue, they have to take it out and pay to get rid of it? Uh, something needs to be looked into here, I feel. Because I can take my grass and, and branches, anything under two inches in diameter.
Okay.
Or two inches or under. Uh, that needs to be looked into. There's a lot of space out there, a whole lot more than there was down by the sewer plant, and I saw cones over here, this is where the branches go, cones over here where the grass goes, goes, and a whole lot of space in between.
Okay.
I think that needs to be looked into, and what can we do with those things? Because it's going to cost people money, and we're already paying, what, over a million dollars to develop this new site, and it's not as usable as it was down there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council during oral presentation? You've got three minutes, state your name and your address. If not, I will ask Mr. Welper to go into exec session.
Motion to receive and file oral comments adjourned to executive session after this...
Rosetta Robinson?
All right.
Oh, my God, like five questions. Okay, I've been Wa, I've been living in Waterloo almost forty years, I mean, almost fifty, yeah, fifty. And I never knew, I've never seen all the houses that not fixed up, they're just downright not fixed up, and we need some, we need to do something about them houses. They're sitting on the east side and the west side, and I would like to buy a house, but I can't afford it because they want too much for it. I would love to buy one house, we want to see three during the summertime, and they just want too much, and we can't, people that own low income can't afford that kind of house, and they would like to buy a house, too. I'm another, couldn't hire, I would like your support in helping me get the youth together, you know, start getting some of the, uh, youth from the schools and stuff, and start doing stuff with them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Anyone else like to address the council?
Motion to receive and file oral comments adjourned to executive session.
Second. We have a motion to receive and file oral comments adjourned to executive session. Mr. Zellifer, are we doing this correct?
Yeah, Dave Zellifer, City Attorney, we are doing it correctly, even that it deals with the purchase of property pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty-one-point-five-one-J.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacob.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned to executive session.